Noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you all for coming. We have a full-packed agenda tonight, but we wanted to start out first of all, I'd like to welcome Peter Light. He's here for our meeting, so in case you will stand up for just a second so everybody can, if you don't see her. So, Peter.[33.22][33.22](Applause). Sorry, Peter. He'll be starting on July 1st, and we will definitely miss Bill, but I'm sure he's ready to go do some golfing or something else for a while. Also, I'd like to recognize some very important people that are not going to be with us next year. But first, I'm going to turn it to Marie and let you talk about a very special community member that we have, Mr. Bill Evans, if you wouldn't mind standing. Bob Evans, sorry, God, he said Bill. Bob, would you mind standing? I'm looking right at you, Bob. I just said hi. Yeah, talking about Bill. And I'm going to let Marie say a few things.
So, the school committee invited Dr. Bob Evans from the Acton Finance Committee to join us tonight as he is preparing to retire from his position on the Finance Committee. Bob has been working on behalf of the students of the Acton-Boxboro Regional School District and the town of Acton for almost 50 years. Bob served on the school committee for 15 years. He's been on the Finance Committee for 20, and in the years in between, he volunteered in many capacities, including being instrumental in negotiating contracts on behalf of the school committee for a period of contract cycles. Bob's name is on most of our school buildings because of his contribution, serving on every school building committee in the last two to three decades. Even though Bob is retiring from his position on the Finance Committee, he will continue to bring his wisdom and expertise to the current building committee for our new building project. Bob was also an instrumental contributor on the Expanded Region and the Regionalization Committee, and he has chaired the Health Insurance Trust for many years. Under Bob's leadership, the Health Insurance Trust has a healthy fund balance and has kept costs down, saving the district and the employees many, many dollars. Bob has a quiet way, but when he speaks, his comments are always well-thought-out and extremely wise and valuable. We wish Bob and his family well, and we thank him for his considerable contributions. We have an Acton-Boxboro chair for you, Bob, and also a nice memorable paperweight gift. The chair, there's a sample chair up here, but we're going to deliver it to your home over the next week or so.[192.48][192.48](Applause).
We have two other, two of our school committee members that are resigning for different reasons. The first one, Katie Neville, we wish you all the congratulations as Katie moves, gets married, and starts a new life with her family. So, congratulations, and I know Mary wants to say something.
So, Katie, it has been wonderful working with you. You know, I spoke at the Boxboro Town Meeting Monday night. The first thing that impressed me with Katie, she joined the Boxboro School Committee in 2013, right when we were voting on full regionalization, and she came on and voted no. She was the only no vote, and I was like, wow, she's got a lot of chutzpah. And I really respected that, because I think, you know, it's a problem if we can't come on and represent our views. And so, and then you've continued to do that. But when, you know, so then it passed, and then you've been a total team member in making regionalization, full regionalization work. But you always keep us thinking about holidays and other really important issues that you've worked on, and it's just been so valuable. Having a different viewpoint is so important, and then there are times where we were really together, and it's just all beautiful. And I've just enjoyed getting to know you as a person as well, so thank you so much.[301.12][301.12](Applause).
And we'd also like to recognize Bridget Bieber. Bridget has been on the committee since 2006, so she has served a long time through a lot of changes, and has always been, at least for me, someone that, since I've been on, I can call and just say, you know, would you help me out here? She's like, well, Amy, we can't talk about this. Okay, fine. Okay. She's always been a great source of, in policy and in budget. Really appreciate it. I appreciate all your advice. And Mary.
Yeah, so you've just been a mentor, and I get a little nervous thinking about next year without you. You are that voice of reason. You know, I think a lot of us get really passionate about this work, and that's a wonderful thing. And not that you don't have passion, but then you have that, yes, but have you thought about this? And just level all the time, and able to look at different perspectives and really bring it to the discussion and to help us make the best decision. It's been amazing working with you, and I just look forward to, I know we'll stay friends, and this is how we became friends through all of this work, and I hope you'll stay connected and give us your voice every now and then when we need it. So, thank you, Bridget.[403.41][403.41](Applause). Katie was offered a chair, but she's like me, it probably won't fit in her house, right? Who has room for another chair?
Okay, so we also have the opportunity to approve the donation from the Acton-Boxboro Student Activities Fund, and I'm wondering if Bill can help you?
Thank you, Amy. We have a number of representatives here from the ABSAF Board, as they do every year. The Board and student Board members make a presentation of a gift, a donation to the school district. This year is a special year in that regard, and I'm going to let them talk about the specialness of this year. But for many years, ABSAF has been providing funding for student activity, student activities as well as athletics for A.B. Their work, we appreciate their work and their dedication to this effort so much, and many things that we are involved in as a district, that our students are involved in, just would not happen if it weren't for the working efforts of ABSAF. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Hi, everyone. I'm Linda Ahern. I'm the president of the Acton-Boxboro Student Activities Fund, and I'm here tonight with some of our student Board members. I have junior Grace Fitzgerald, sophomore Ally Feniman, freshman Sam Ahern, senior Alex Ewing, senior Riley Eaton, and then two of our adult Board members, we have Todd Feniman and Casey Eaton, and our photographers in the back, Lucinda Sears and Christine Phillips. So, thanks for having us. As many of you know, ABSAF is a unique Board within our community. It's made up of both student and adult Board members. Each student serves the Board for a two-year term. And actually, we run our Board quite like you all do, with Robert's rules, so it's interesting for them all to experience being here tonight. And at the time, they do partner with adults at the monthly meetings, they build awareness at events throughout the community, and we fundraise a significant amount of money that we then donate back to the A.B. School District. So, this is done through a direct sales of our ABSAF pass, through an email campaign, a direct mailing, a social media presence on Facebook and Twitter. We have a new seasonal newsletter that we put out this year three times, and then we have our annual phone-a-thon that we do in two nights in October. It's our goal to ensure that our fundraising efforts reach as many students as possible and support all the extracurricular activities that our students do. So, whether it's sports, or band, or chorus, performing arts, or the theater, or academic clubs, that's what we support. So, I'd like to have Riley Eaton share a little bit more information about what we do. Riley is graduating in June. She's going to be heading to Fairfield University, and she's pursuing a degree in nursing. She's been a leader amongst our student Board members for two years. She served her two years as a very active monthly member on our Board, attending our meetings and always participating in the conversations. Riley is one of the student Board members that I could always count on to pitch in whenever help was needed. Even tonight, Riley was one of the first ones to volunteer to help, so we really appreciate that. Will that Riley?
Each year, our Board works within our community to raise funds, which in turn we release to you, to be used, as you see appropriately, by the junior high and high school for student activities. We constantly look at our means to raise money. We incorporate social media, media sites to provide communication around building awareness, and we discuss options that we think could be helpful and innovative. It is our hope that through the efforts, we are able, we are able to offset the costs for the students and their families, while at the same time, helping to contribute to the activities that make our communities so special.
Alex Ewing is our next presenter. He's also played an important role on our Board over the last two years. He's been vocal member during Board meetings, and then most recently was involved in developing our spring newsletter. Alex has been an asset to our Board, as Riley has, and he will be headed to Indiana University in the fall to study business. Their peers look up to both of these students, and we will absolutely miss them in the fall and wish them a lot of luck. So, I'm going to have Alex come up.
Thank you. Through the efforts that Linda discussed earlier, ABSAF has donated over $735,000 to the A.B. School District in the past eight years. Tonight, we are proud to present, with the support of all our Board members, a check in the amount of $121,000. This total represents $71,000 raised by ABSAF, plus a $50,000 one-time donation from Middlesex Savings Bank. We are grateful for all individuals that have served on our Board, their dedication to the A.B. community, and their hard work throughout the year to make this incredible donation possible. We are also very thankful to the community members who have generously donated to ABSAF to support our students and this gift. Finally, we are beyond thankful for the generosity of Middlesex Savings Bank, who has recognized the hard work that ABSAF does to support our students. We are very happy to present this check to you tonight, and we look forward to working with you throughout the next school year.
Thank you. We got one outside. We use the light. Thanks, everybody.
So, we do need to take a vote at this time, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the donation. Bridget?
Move to accept the donation with gratitude.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, so we're at the part of our meeting now where we have public participation. Our policy for public speak is over on the table. Is there anyone that would like to speak from the public?
Yes. I'm sorry, you have to come over here. Yes, yes.
We only have two minutes for the public, but that's fine. Thank you very much.
And if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself.
Hi, I'm Brenda Curdica. I'm a resident of Mallet Drive in Acton. It's a cul-de-sac. These are also residents of Mallet Drive. There's six houses on the street. Sue Mahanti, she has a high schooler next year going. Sarah Russell has two elementary students, and Harry Dong has an elementary and a high schooler starting next year. I myself have a high schooler and elementary student. I tried to, we all worked together to abbreviate this, because we know we have a lot to say, and we appreciate your time. And just a little quick background, in 2016, J.D. did, Head did meet with us, and we brought out Detective Perrell, and they determined it was when you had made the decision to stop going down cul-de-sacs. They had determined that ours, where they were doing the drop on our cul-de-sac, wasn't safe. They moved it to our street side. But they also, it was observed that it was a high-speed cut across-street. Adam Street is a cut across from Parker Street to High Street. So, what we're advocating for is just the opportunity for you to reconsider the cul-de-sac policy for Acton and take it on a case-by-case basis, maybe bring it to arbitration, that we can come and present further in the future. But what we've given you today is just, hey, we've come out, we've talked, we've gone through this process, and we still feel it's very unsafe for our students, for ourselves, because it's not laziness. We have a very short cul-de-sac with a wide turnaround. It was never inconvenient for buses. But being down there in bad weather is what the concern is. There's a number of accidents, so I disregarded the accidents that we presented to J.D. Head and the safety officer, and just took them for the past two school years. And as you can see in the package of those accidents, I've even included one from the fire department chief, who I had talked to, and she indicated that while she was standing there with one accident, one other one almost occurred, because it's on a curve coming down the hill, and cars hit their brakes and they lose control. So, please take the time to read this information, all us residents here, six houses on the street, only four with students, and all of us are very concerned for the safety of our students, the safety of the school bus stopping there when these cars come around a curve and don't have time to react. There are no speed limit signs, there are no signs warning ahead, and those were things that were identified by the safety officer that would be good additions to the area, but didn't occur, and I'm sure it's because of budget and time for people. It took 70 seconds, we timed it over a two-week period, for the bus to come up, turn around, pick up kids, and go back down. 70 seconds on average, I should say. So, please, please relook at the cul-de-sac policy, readdress it now that you're going to one-tier system, and realize it's not our laziness that we don't want to walk down the street and be there with the kids. We're all doing that. It's the safety of our children. It's very near and dear to us, and it's also the safety of any bus that's there if something happens.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to put all of this together, and thank you for coming this evening.
Hi, Gary Kushner. I'm a member of the Boxboro Finance Committee and liaison to the school committee, but tonight I'm here representing myself. I wanted to talk about conflict of scheduling. This week has come to the attention of members of the Boxboro Town that we are scheduling events at the school at the same time as our legislature is occurring in Boxboro. This week was our town meeting. Tuesday night was a 7th and 8th grade concert at the junior high school. My son was playing. I'm on the Finance Committee. I had to make a trade-off. Monday night, there was a baseball coaches game, our first night. Tonight, if we had gone three nights, would have been our third night. I don't know whether you would have canceled the meeting or not, but I think we need to pay more attention to both Acton and Boxboro's legislative events. We don't have many big days in Boxboro, but we do appreciate scheduling around that. So, I just ask you to pay attention to that in the future. I've heard in the past, this has been an issue. I don't know if it's been raised, but I just felt, because of what happened Tuesday night, that I really needed to talk. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Gary. We will definitely, do you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Amy. On occasion, when there is a concern raised of public participation, and we have some information to share, we do so. I appreciate the comments. We have, in the last couple of weeks, received other comments about this very thing. We were alerted to that. I was alerted to that a couple of weeks ago. I just want the school committee to know, and the public to know, that this is an item that we actually talked about at our last school leadership team meeting, so we're looking at putting in place some practices to ensure that these kind of meetings do not have conflicts in the future going forward. So, we're, we've become very sensitive to that, and I think, I'm confident that you'll see changes in the future. So, I appreciate that, Gary.
Okay. So, up next, we have, I'm sorry, what? Wait.
Sorry, are we going to respond to the first group of people?
So, typically, during public participation, we don't respond. We have the information, and then we'll take it back, and whoever the right person is, will take a look at it, and then we'll be in touch with the families.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a presentation from the Merriam School with their principal, Ed Kaufman. If you could come up?
Nope. Thank you, Amy. No, I just want to, no, clapping is allowed. So, as you're aware, we have gone through the year with a series of presentations from all of our schools. The Merriam School is here tonight, represented by Principal Ed Kaufman and current Assistant Principal, but Principal-elect Juliana Schneider. They'll be making their presentation, and we welcome them.[1238.14][1238.14](Applause).
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here tonight to share some of the things we're excited about at Merriam School. I first just want to introduce several members of our school council who are here tonight, Michelle Pruitt and Karen Sauner, two of our teachers are here this evening, and they're on our school council. And of course, Juliana Schneider, as Bill mentioned, our current Assistant Principal, and Principal-to-be is also here as well, as part of our presentation. And she and I are here to discuss a couple of important aspects of our work this year. I'll be sharing our work around relational trust, which connects to our wellness goal, and Juliana will discuss the work we've done around curriculum mapping, which has been our major curriculum goal this year. For years now, building strong relationships has been at the core of what we do at Merriam, with the assumption that those relationships promote wellness in a multitude of ways. By the way, those are, we did an activity called Hand Mapping, and those happened to be my hands. I was a little embarrassed about what's written in them, but it was, it was an activity that we did together as a staff. Six years ago, as a way to strengthen relationships at Merriam, we participated in a two-year research study with seven other New England schools. This study was conducted by the University of Virginia and an organization called the Center for Courage and Renewal. The premise: Building relational trust among faculty in a school would lead to children's success in academics and social relationships. A team from Merriam met regularly with representatives from those other schools, along with facilitators, and in between, we did many activities and had many conversations as a school community. After two full years of hard work, we noticed a huge change, and the researchers found powerful results supporting their hypothesis. The report of this work is lengthy, but here's just one finding: Improved collaboration among staff leads to higher-quality assignments and instruction, and more effective conversations about students, their work, and their well-being. This was one of many findings of the researchers at the University of Virginia that was powerful and meaningful for all of us. For the past four years, we have continued this work and expanded upon it. Recently, we brainstormed some of the activities and practices that we have worked on over the years. On the left, you'll see the Connections activity, which we use to begin every staff meeting to help people get in the moment of the meeting. Many other activities have helped us to get to know one another, both personally and professionally. The climbing the ladder expression that you see also on the left is one we commonly use as a way to remind ourselves not to think the worst in a situation, or to catastrophize if something isn't going well. We'll hear one another say in the building, "Oh, I was just starting to climb the ladder", and then we step down a few of the rungs. On the right, you'll see recent school themes, which change every year and have included activities that all tie in with wellness, such as group work, gratitude, and resilience. And you'll see ways that we've utilized protocols to help build our cooperative work and relational In a recent faculty meeting, we met in small groups and in the large group, and relived the challenges and successes of the last six years. When you're, when you're in the midst of change, it can be very difficult, but looking back together, there was a tremendous amount of laughter and good humor. In small groups, we also brainstormed activities that will help to maintain the relational trust within the school, and then another list that will help to deepen those relationships. This work has become part of the fabric of who we are, and will continue to be at Merriam School. I'm going to pass it over to Juliana, who will talk about our curriculum work.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening, school committee members, colleagues, and community members. During the past few years at Merriam, we have focused tremendous efforts on curriculum, always with the goal of deepening our instruction on behalf of students. We have worked with outside consultant Stephen Levy, who helped us look more closely at our projects with the goal of tightening our learning targets and increasing engagement. We have worked with Kathy Collins, a wonderful literacy coach, consultant, and author. She worked with us in order to help us define our Reader's Workshop. She coached teachers within the classrooms, and she has also spent time planning with grade-level teams, focusing on integrating literacy instruction into projects. Last year, the 2016-2017 year, we had multiple committees, Merriam is known for our committees, working on different areas of the curriculum, including technology, math, science, and literacy, and we decided to bring these teachers together with the common goal of integrating our instruction through projects and documenting this work in order to create curriculum maps. Our hope was that these curriculum maps would provide a certain level of consistency across grade levels, which would allow for deepened collaboration. We worked extensively defining our vision, determining exactly what these curriculum maps would include, and we created a plan for implementing this work with our entire This group of teachers, along with Heather Haynes, our district math specialist, and Sharon Ryan, our district literacy coordinator, attended a curriculum boot camp this past year in New York City. And since this professional learning opportunity, we've acquired the resources needed to focus our thinking, develop protocols for unpacking standards, creating projects, as well as tools for developing essential questions. Our group has met continuously throughout the year, and we have led our building-based professional learning times that occur on half-day Thursdays, as well as led many faculty meetings, and have, we have also led many of our weekly collaborative grade-level times. This slide is just a slide of, on the upper left, it is an anchor chart of one of the grade levels who has worked through our project protocol. We have checklists in order to deter, that include different components of project work. This is the actual cutting apart of standards in order to put them under different areas where we're teaching, and you can see too, the resources that we've collected to support project work. Last week, we had a curriculum celebration with our entire staff. Grade levels displayed work that showed the process that they have gone through this year, including those charts that they used as they developed projects. Some included student work, rubrics, teaching resources, and other artifacts that represented their journey. Throughout this process, and specifically during the celebration- This slide is just a slide of, on the upper left, it is an anchor chart of one of the grade levels who has worked through our project protocol. We have checklists in order to deter, that include, um, different components of project work. This is the actual cutting apart of standards in order to, um, put them under different areas where we're teaching. And you can see too, the resources that we've collected to support project work. Last week, we had a curriculum celebration with our entire staff. Grade levels displayed work that showed the process that they have gone through this year, including those charts that they used as they developed projects. Some included student work, rubrics, teaching resources, and other artifacts that represented their journey. Throughout this process, and specifically during the celebration last week, we elicited teacher feedback in order to guide us as we continue our work forward. These are just some pictures of our celebration. Moving forward, during the 2018-2019 school year, we will continue our work with the goal of completing three integrated consensus projects at every grade level. We will be looking together at student work in order to deepen our own practice and we will develop a process for continual refinement so that our projects reflect best practice, current technologies, and account for changing authentic audiences. I would like to end this evening by sharing that I am honored to be appointed as the next Merriam School Principal, and I look forward to continuing both the leading-together work that Ed spoke of and this curriculum work. Each of these areas reflects our commitment at Merriam School to collaboration, projects, student engagement, wellness, and academic excellence. Thank you.
So this, this last slide is, feels very fitting for me. It's our gratitude wall. We had, uh, our school theme a couple of years ago was gratitude, and groups of students throughout the school created their own definitions of what gratitude meant to them. And I just wanna close with a few words of gratitude, uh, for myself. I wanna thank all of you, those in front of me who I've worked with for all or part of my 23 years here at AB and the members of the school committee, for, um, the opportunity to work in this tremendous place. It's been an honor, a privilege, and a joy. I watched Merriam School grow from 150 students to over 500 while still maintaining the core philosophical underpinnings that make us who we are. I've been so fortunate to work with so many wonderful and talented people and was also fortunate to drive to school every day with my two daughters during their years at Merriam. I know the future of the school is in great hands with Juliana and the rest of the Merriam staff. One thing I'd like to add, we've worked very hard to place kindness at the center of our interactions at Merriam and to make civility a requirement in all conversations, even those when we disagree. Lately, I've personally been discouraged by some of the disrespectful and unkind words in our larger community, some on social media, around school-related issues, and sometimes directed at specific individuals. My greatest hope for our larger school community is that you can embark on a, on a culture of kindness and civility. From my experience, great things can happen when those qualities are the foundation of what we do. Thank you.
Oh, we might, hold on one second. We might have a few questions and, um, if you want a second. Do we have comments or questions from the committee? Bridgette?
So, um, really interesting and inspirational presentation. Thank you. And just a couple of words, Ed. We worked on a couple of different subcommittees together and it's really been a privilege, um, for me to get to know you a little bit in that way. And I just, I don't know if families realize how much the administrators in the schools and the teachers give besides being there every day. Just the risk-taking, the constant innovation, and that can be really scary to learn how to teach and inspire children in new ways, year after year after year. And I don't know if people realize that, and it's just been so wonderful for me, too, to be able to see the way you and your colleagues do that, year after year. So I just wanted to say thank you. And the gratitude wall is a great example of that. I mean, we, that's, what a wonderful thing to teach children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Jenny?
I wanna say, as a parent of a graduating sixth grader and a daughter who's headed to high school next year, both of whom were at Merriam K-6, what an amazing school it is. I cannot say enough about the teachers, every single one of them, um, and how well-prepared, at least my, my, my one going to high school was for junior high, is thriving in the school district and had a fantastic experience at Merriam, both of them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
And thank you to the teachers.
I just wanna echo, um, Bridgette and Jenny's comments. I'm a Merriam parent as well, and, um, I, I think it was just a right, right fit for, for my, my kids. And, um, uh, I, I just gotta say, any, any project whose, whose, uh, primary material is a, is a book called "I Love Bugs," I'm all in.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna move a couple of things around. We're gonna go ahead and skip down to number seven and discuss the, um, the high school handbook changes. And then we'll come back to the number five, the battery storage project.
Thank you, Amy. You all received in your packet some comprehensive materials from the high school regarding proposed changes to next year's student handbook. And one of the Dean of Students, Peter Kavanaugh, is here to highlight those changes for you. Peter, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you all for having me. Um, so I would just like you to turn your attention to, um, your packet. Um, and in the packet, you'll find the changes and just a couple of things before I get started, so it makes it easier for you to read and follow. Um, the changes, uh, are underlined, so they're either an addition, a deletion, or a change. Um, what I will do is go through each one of them and try to explain to you why the change, um, and to the best of my ability. Um, before I do that, I just wanna talk a little bit about the process, um, that this is the collection of notes and feedback from a lot of different stakeholders, starting last spring. Um, then this document is created and vetted through multiple different groups. Um, that, those groups will include the school council, those groups will include the leadership team at the high school, the admin team at the high school, the handbook recommending committee, um, among others. Uh, so that's a little bit about the process. If I could ask you to just follow along as I go through in the packet. Um, the first section is suggested changes and additions. Um, so anything underlined in this section would be the suggested changes and additions. So number one is an update to the translation information, and that change was made this year to be in line with the district, uh, the language. Uh, number two is the school committee representatives' section of the handbook. And in the handbook, in the past years, it said that the, uh, school committee representatives were selected by the principal, which was not correct. They're, they're elected by the, the student body. Um, so that change would be made. Um, in terms of number three, physical education, um, the change with students who take summer P must leave the equivalent of a one semester alternate class, uh, day class open. Um, that change is there because with taking summer school, our objective is for students to be able to find a balance and focus on their well-being, um, and to free up some time in their schedule the next year to find that balance and well-being. Um, and we think that language would really help that through. Uh, number four is, has to do with scheduling. Um, and talks with the leadership team and other stakeholders at the high school. Uh, the change would move up the level change, up to the five days after quarter one. Um, it was agreed upon that, at that time, the teacher and student would have a good idea of, um, their capabilities in that class, and it would get them into a new class, whether that's a raise or a drop, um, so they could find success sooner within the school year. Number five has to do with early finals on page 19. Um, and this was really a change due to the amount of snow days and exceeding the five snow days this year. Um, so this change would just, um, allow us to be, give early finals within, um, the time that we have been giving them, to be more consistent. Number six has to do with scheduling. Um, and that is the practice, underlined as a practice that we've had, but this just outlines the borders of that practice that we've had in the school, um, the, going forward with scheduling and picking of classes, and really finding, again, that balance and well-being for students with their schedule. And number seven is a pretty straightforward change. The language, uh, by mistake referred to it as the RJ Gray chapter of the National Honor Society. So the change, um, was, now would read the ABRHS chapter of the National Honor Society. Number eight, uh, with interim reports. Uh, this was a change, this is a change that we hope will improve the communication between teachers and parents, um, it, between the time that interims are due and then the end of the quarter, um, that parents will be notified, um, if the students' grades, uh, either suddenly dropped or had a change. Number nine has to do with the test post moment. Um, there is, the language has been changed a bit to just reflect the thinking and the, uh, spirit of the, uh, policy. Uh, the one specific change in there was, um, twenty, from 24 hours to 48 hours. And we felt as a school that that would give enough time for those conversations that we found, uh, teachers and students needed to make changes that were definitely in the best interest of students. It gave them, it would give everyone a little bit more time to have those conversations. Uh, number 10 has to do with testing after vacations, and that change was specifically made to be in line with the district, uh, policies. Uh, number 11 has to do with fines. Um, and the students that have some open-ended obligations, that change would allow those obligations to be met, um, in a more reasonable amount of time. So that moves us to the second section, and everything underlined here would be deletions. So I will try to be as clear as I can about why the deletion. Number one with AB Express, we do not have that, uh, in the high school anymore. Um, we still have ways of the front office or the parents being able to drop off things for the student, but it's not a process that is outlined in the handbook, as it still is. Um, the technology access and use section, we opened up the Wi-Fi last year to students and they've been using their own devices at the high school. So the, we would like the, with that deletion, for the language to reflect that. Number three has to do with physical education. Um, and students have an excuse, who have an excused absence from school or class, um, you know, such as being sick, field trips, um, do not, are not required to make up the class anymore. Um, in years past, the attendance of a student in PE was a real big factor for the grade, and that is not the case anymore. There's a lot more work that's been done by our PE department head, um, a lot of great work, um, to make, to assess the students. Uh, number four, should not have been there. I made that change this morning, so that's why it's crossed out. Um, five is about mid-year and final assessments. Um, so we're deleting during the last four days of the school year and, uh, the exam, for the exemption, that does not apply to semester courses. Number six, uh, this change was made a few years ago. Uh, I'm not exactly sure when it was made, but the histogram is not part of the, the, uh, the transcript anymore. So just to take that out, so that reflects that. Number seven has to do with report cards. Uh, report cards for terms one and three are given out, uh, in advisory, and that'll be taken out. Uh, report cards are delivered electronically now. Number eight is a simple deletion. That section in the yearbook, uh, the handbook focuses just on mid-years and not finals, so it shouldn't refer to finals there. Uh, the next, the next section, it has only one line in it. Uh, number three, it's the technical and grammatical edits, and there's just a technical, uh, addition there with the last line. Nothing has changed with the actual policy. Number, the last section, number four, uh, these are two extensive language updates, um, where the language, uh, has changed a good amount. The first one, it has to do with the library procedures. And so just an, uh, a recap of like what the changes in there are. Um, given the new times of next year's, uh, high school schedule, um, the times that we had in there were not, would not be applicable, so we've taken those out. Um, the devices that the library now offers, uh, changes, um, pretty frequently in, for the better, getting more devices, different devices. Um, and so before, it listed the specific amount of devices, um, and what we had, and it just was out of date. Um, another change that's taking place in the library is that it is now broken up into a silent section and a collaborative section, um, to reflect the type of learning that we want going on in the high school. And the old policy had spoken to the library being completely silent. Um, the last piece of this that has, uh, changed is that there was a 10-minute rule for the students that they needed to be in there within the first 10 minutes, uh, to avoid confusion with lunches. Um, but the library staff has found if they are just, uh, understanding and the students can, uh, see for themselves that the library is too full at some point after 10 minutes, and they can make that decision that they'll just need to find the counseling center or one of the other places to do some work. Um, and then the last change, the, the last extensive change on the sheet and in the packet, um, is, uh, from the district level. And, uh, because a lot of the language had not been updated in a while, uh, it just made sense to, in, update that entire section.
I have a couple of questions. Just one minute. All right. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Um, I'll, I'll open it up to questions or comments from the committee. Angie, do you wanna say something?
Yeah. So the, uh, on the changes, just to clarify, what does that, the, for the PE changes, what does that mean, open on their schedule? Does, does that mean that, uh, if they take the summer PE and for the following semesters, and they have to have that period not, can they do elective or take, cannot, they cannot do elective?
Um, they, they, so if they, they need to leave that section open, if, for, they...
As if they have to take the P, the PE in the semester. So they have to leave that open. They cannot do elective, and they cannot do any other courses in that period.
Um, I think it would come down to a conversation with their counselor and what was best for that student. Um, we asked that they, we would like the reason for students to be choosing to take the summer is to free up some time so they have a more balance and, uh, they can focus on their well-being, whether that's getting a little bit more work done, as opposed to making the decision to fit more classes in. So that, again, that would be an individual conversation with the counselor on that piece. Um, I think the other reasoning behind that change would also be that to get, to try to get into summer school, you have, the, the timing is off a little bit, and sometimes a student is not able to get into summer school, and so they need to leave that time there to actually take, uh, PE, summer school, or to not take summer school PE, but to take it during the year, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand the, the reason behind that. The, uh, from what I understand, a lot of students take the summer PE because they're interested in some elective or something.
Yeah.
They're trying to free up a, a one period for, for the class and, and just kinda defeat the whole purpose with some, for some of the students to take the summer PE. So I'm trying to understand what's the, the reason behind it. The other thing is, I have a kinda general question. You, at the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that you have collect, there's a kinda collectively data that, um, how is the, the data from the community or the, and the students are collected?
Um, so there's a student representative, um, from, of, that is on the committee for the handbook. Um, and he, he's been really great. He's been essential in, in forming. He's created advisory activities to get feedback, um, and he's just met with me, um, multiple times to talk about things.
I have questions on the same one.
Go ahead.
So I wonder, so I was thinking about, what my daughter was thinking about, trying to take summer PE to take like ceramics or photography, which I think is actually good for one's mental health. And so I wonder if instead of must leave it, there's a way to phrase it that, uh, must consult with their advisor or something about that if they wanna schedule a class there. Just leave it a little bit more open?
Yep.
Yeah, so...
Yeah. Great. I took notes on both of those. Thank you.
Tessa?
I just had a question, um, about number five, just understanding what the, what you were trying to get at. I didn't understand what it meant, like postpone within 10, like does that mean they take them after school ends? I, I, I just didn't understand. I, I understand what you were trying to get at, but I just didn't understand the way it was phrased.
Just which section are you referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Uh, the early finals, page 19, or number, sorry. It's in the first section, the very first section.
So we wanted to be, when students were able to schedule early finals, we found that this year with the excessive, well, the, the big amount of snow days, that we weren't in compliance with the language that was there now, uh, because we were pushing them is so early. So we wanted a clear date or a clear 10 days when they could schedule them. Does that make sense?
Maybe you should say, within 10 days... Maybe you should say, within 10 days after the last scheduled day of school. Because what he's saying is school could go for 10 more days beyond the calendar.
Right. I guess I just, yeah, it just didn't make sense to me when they could actually take it. Because the way it's phrased, it almost sounds to me like they could take it after, like which didn't postpone and, you know, do you know what I'm saying?
Okay, all right. We'll relook at the language, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, Mary?
This is really picky, but since we're educators, we need to get it right. Number eight, teachers will issue an interim report after interim time one time if the students possessive grade.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, thanks, Mary. Questions?
Yeah, Maria? I guess I, maybe I'm obtuse. What does teachers will issue an interim report after interim time one time mean? I mean, I think I know, but interim time, I've not been to the high school yet. Is it time for exams or assessment or...
Midway through the grading period that we have a day where teachers, if the grade is at a certain level, need to send an interim report home to communicate with parents. And so after that time, we wanted a way for the teachers to communicate to the parents again. If at the end, if that day when the interim reports were scheduled to be go, to gone out, the grade was fine and then it suddenly dropped, that they were communicating with the parents before the end of the quarter. And so you didn't have the confusion right at the end of the quarter.
Yeah, maybe we can reword that a little bit. That's great. Thanks. Yeah, questions? Just, yeah, Eileen?
Yeah, I'd like to echo Mary said about the number three, physical education. I think it's very reasonable to put the better language there because just like Angie and Mary mentioned and some kids, not necessarily trying to burden themselves in the whole semester later on, they might want to take something, you know, really fun or something. And it's better to come, you know, have further discussion and better than that language, right? So I have some question about number one. I think I don't know if I, I think I noticed that last time, Don mentioned we have 32 or 33 different language in this practice, language practice in our community. And if we can, if we have all those 32 or 33 translated, student handbook will be, I don't know how much cost that. My suggestion, I think I send an email to Bill, say we may have some volunteer parents to be the pool of the translator. And whoever sent the request want to, you know, really get to know the handbook in detail. The volunteer whoever can help instead of have all those, if we have 10 translated handbook already, but why not have 33? I mean, we can, we could have some way to, to save our cost. That's what I suggest, I'm thinking. Or maybe put some language there, say whenever whoever, you know, have request. Not like standard translation, but just my, just my suggestion. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Are there other questions? Yeah, I just need you to, it's really, so in order to give everybody an opportunity to speak, I just kind of need you to raise your hand. I didn't mean to cut you off earlier. The, I just wanted to let you know that the only, I was just trying to spread out, you know, everybody having a chance to talk. So please, go ahead.
For the, the right to request postpone, will you be able to consider the presentation? Because my understanding right now, the presentation is becoming like a norm in the student classes. And the presentation is actually is a very heavy-duty class, a task. So please take the presentation into the, you know, just like the quiz. And also from the feedback that what I heard is a lot of times that the teachers cannot, you know, the quizzes, there is, because the language used here is, there is no like 50-plus point or 75-plus point quizzes, it's like significant. So some teachers kind of like, oh, this is not, and they don't, they don't take that into consideration. But for the students, they are taking those are very, you know, heavy-duty considerations. So maybe you want to more define the language and what kind of is qualified to be able to request for the postpone. And can I have one more? Can you help me understand the, one of the, one of the thing that you're talking about, the AP? I'm confused on, does that mean that if the student takes the AP classes and he went, the student went to take the AP exam, but he cannot, not taking final? No? Okay.
Is it possible for you to identify on the yellow handout by page number and then number what you're relating, you're relating to?
And to number five, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, can you repeat your question one more time?
Okay, the question is, I'm trying to understand, when can the student, because it sounds like the student cannot, they have to take the final regardless?
No, that's a deletion, so that's, so it's going to be the exact opposite there. So, so the exemption didn't, before it didn't apply to semester courses and now it's going to apply to all of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
In section one, number 10, just reflecting on the summit that Diane and I attended on poverty, I assume that families' financial situations as far as the funds...
I'm sorry, what, what, you number 10 is testing after vacations?
Section one, number 10, fines. Section one, number 10 on fines.
Oh, 11, fines, okay.
Oh, number 11, sorry.
No, don't worry, don't worry.
I was like, I made all my notes on my thing, on my computer. What do you mean? I assume that students' family situations are taken into account.
Hundred percent.
As worded, sounds so harsh, you know, that, I mean, I imagine it doesn't actually happen all that often, but maybe.
And, and a hundred percent, yes, absolutely.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep.
Yeah, section one, number...
Angie, I'm sorry, I have to just ask you to just raise your hand and wait for, okay, sorry. I know you're excited to talk. Go ahead.
Section one, number six. Is there a reason that we have to set the number of, I understand that it's crazy to take like IP, AP classes. And to my understanding that not many students, or even there's any student doing that at all. But is there any reason why we want to set a limit there? And we can always say, you know, if you want to do that and you have to consult with the counselors first. But is there any reason that we have to set a limit?
I mean, this was the practice that we've had in, in the conversation that we've had with students in terms of scheduling. So we thought that putting it in here would just define it clearly, our expectations.
So the expectation is not to take that?
So to schedule no more than five AP courses or less than, less than four classes.
Okay, so that's a, but every student are different, you know. I know they're, it's crazy, but there may be some students can do that. So I don't understand that why we want to set an upper limit there.
All right.
Other questions from the committee? This is a first read, so you are welcome to go over this and submit your questions to Bill and he'll get them over to Peter. So this is, not all of this is your first read. So we, you have some time to think about it again before. So Peter, thank you, oh.
No, I just want to, if I can, Amy, follow up on that. So we did have a number of questions submitted. Some were able to be responded to over the course of the next few weeks. When we prepare for the seventh, we'll, we'll respond to questions that weren't answered tonight. And in the meantime, if you do have questions that you haven't already asked or that come up, please let us know as soon as possible prior to the seventh or prior to when the packet would go out. As Amy mentioned, tonight's, the purpose of tonight's agenda was for our first read. We will be looking to ask you to vote to approve the handbook on June 7th. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing. So it's really important that we take that vote on the 7th because they need to get this to, they need to get all of this stuff in early rather than later. So it's, it's really important that we're prepared to take that vote on the 7th. So please try to get your questions in beforehand. Mary, Marie?
I'm Marie, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit, if that's okay. I think you asked about the AP in the form of a question, why? And I think it's the practice at the high school and it's been based on many years of experience with students and data and looking at things and leadership team making decisions. So it's, I think the feedback is good. I just don't want to sort of leave the conversation with people thinking that because a suggestion was made, there's definitely going to be a change made. Just...
No, thank you, Marie. I think that is important. And generally in practice, you know, the high school staff along with the administration think through these changes, they're reviewed, you know, the handbook is reviewed every year. I will tell you the process that has been described to me that AB Regional High School goes through on a yearly basis. They take the process of reviewing their handbook very seriously. The Handbook Review Committee, that is really an ongoing standing committee, if you will, does not happen in every district to that extent. And so, you know, I just want to say that I think that all of these changes, additions, deletions have been well thought out. The school committee should rely on its staff for a lot of the procedural and protocol pieces that go along, that are part of a handbook. And, and then I also, just before we break, you know, there are a lot of people have been involved in this. Somebody has to be the presenter and, and lead us through this process. And Pete has done just a very fine job in doing that. And Pete, thank you for your patience and putting this all together.
Thank you.
You might want to have a conversation with your colleagues next year and have somebody else, you know, whatever you want to do. Yeah. No, this was perfect. Thank you so much for standing up here and taking all of our comments and questions. Yeah, Diane, you want to say something?
I don't want you to walk away without knowing how much we appreciate. It's 100 pages and really, really great attention to detail. And we appreciate all the hard work that you do to keep this updated and relevant.
Thank you.
Absolutely, really, really appreciate it. Paul?
I just wanted to echo Marie and Bill. I understand this is not policy, this is the handbook. But having gone through policy meetings and developing policy, they're, they're very deliberative efforts. And, and I understand it's the same thing here. I agree in principle with everything that you're doing. The only questions I had were clarification and, and English and that kind of stuff to, to make it clear. But, but please don't go away thinking that, that we, that at least I can't, I can't speak for the committee, but I, I agree with what you're doing and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Eileen, we need, is this a question? Okay, so I'm going to ask you to halt, to just send him the question, send it to Bill and Bill will get it to Peter because we just need to keep moving forward. Okay?
Thank you all for your time tonight.
Okay, go ahead. That's fine.
I think I totally heard Marie said about the, you know, I wanted to thank Peter for the whole thing. And then, you know, you probably, all of you spend a lot of time doing this in detail. Even just by reading it, I don't know how long it's going to take me to read through, okay? But I do take my time read very carefully. And I think our effort need to be somehow respected too. And when we spend the time on this, read this very carefully, we would like to see what's the reason behind that, what's going on. And like everybody mentioned that physical education, I hope the language can be changed better. I do respect what Marie said, all those things. I, I think I mentioned in my email, however, I really wanted to mention it here for testing after vacations. And I don't know how this get, I do see the, the good result, which is nobody has anything in the vacation. You have, you like or not, you, you, you will enjoy your vacation. But however, when all the kids come back from the vacations, all their work piled up together in that short week, in three days or four days, they have to finish the amount of work left there. You know, either something will be due before the vacation Friday morning or the whole thing will be due next four days or three days in the next week. Can anybody taking care of that if, if I'm not wrong with that? Okay? This is my concern for the first 10 test after, testing after vacations project or anything, it's all same. Okay, so kids are very stressful after vacation. That's my experience with my kids. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eileen. So I just want to clarify, if my comments gave you the, the impression that school committee comments and questions weren't welcomed, then I apologize for that. In fact, they are welcomed and I think it's important. And the kind of questions you ask and the discussion that goes along with that is important for the staff to then consider. I think that there were some salient suggestions brought up tonight, which my sense is will probably result in some adjustments when you see this next. This is a process where people have different ideas about certain procedures or, or policy statements. And I think that it's inevitable that that's just going to happen. When you vote next time, if there, if somebody has a, is just believes strongly in a particular wording or section that you want to see a change, you certainly as a committee, because you're approving this handbook, as a member, you would have the opportunity to put forward a motion to make a change. And if in fact, the majority of the school committee agrees with that, then, you know, that's something that would be, would go forward. So, so your questions and your feedback is important. The staff does listen to that. We may not always agree, but, but there is a process that if you really feel strongly about a particular item, you can, you have options to, to pursue that.
Thank you, Bill. That's good to hear.
Go ahead.
One quick one, just when, when you made the change, a hundred percent on the page was the student wellness, which is really still pressure. So because I saw one, then there's one that if you upgrade or downgrade your courses and seven points are taken, kind of feel that's harsh. So, so when you take those into consideration and kind of be gentle on the grade because that's what the student is really, they do really care about it. And the other one related to number, which is the 48 hours, change from the 24 hours. My understanding is some of this teacher doesn't even assign it to two days before. And the over sudden two days and two days before, they don't have anything. And two days after, they have everything. So please take that into the consideration as well because that's where the, the pressure is coming from. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we're going to move to the battery storage project, JD and Kate.
So as Amy said, JD and Kate are here. They're going to make a brief presentation on the battery storage project. There'll be a time for, for Q and A, of course, after that. We are looking for a vote tonight authorizing the interim superintendent to enter into an electrical services agreement with Enronak Inc. So that's the action that we would hope you will consider when we're ready for it. Thanks, Kate.
See if I got that right. Can you all hear me okay? Very good. Good evening. My name is Kate Crosby for those whom I haven't met yet, and I'm the energy manager for the district. And I work for the facilities department with JD. And I'm delighted to be here presenting this project to you tonight for your consideration. We, there's an agreement before you that we are hoping that you will feel positive about signing. And I'm just going to walk through three slides and some of the background of this project. We actually, we're approached by, partly because the district has done a great job on being out in front on energy issues, we hear about opportunities and sometimes are approached. And that was true for this project. We actually got calls from two different vendors who wanted to ask us to consider working on a storage project with them involving two different funding channels. And the very first call that we got was from a AB grad who graduated the high school in 2008 and is working for an energy startup out in California. And dialed me up and had no idea that I would know exactly who his mother was, but it was really fun. So that's how we began. What has evolved over the course of a lot of discussions and consulting with experts and the two possibilities getting refined is what you have here before you. The project is a $2.5 million project. It is funded 50% by a state grant for $1.25 million through the ACES program, which is up at the top of your slide here, which is, which is money flowing through the Mass Clean Energy Center and the Department of Energy Resources. And the other $1.25 million is being contributed by Enernoch, which is the private firm that has the proposal here for your consideration tonight. So it involves the, the work that Acton Boxborough is being asked to, to contribute is to host the array, to site the array here on the central campus and to receive a portion of the revenue stream from this storage array. And that's pretty much our entire contribution, which is terrific. Enernoch will handle all the interaction with the state around the grant protocols. They also will provide the rest of the capital needed for investment beyond the state grant, which was, I will say, there were 26 grants made in this program and this was the maximum amount that could be awarded. So it's a project that the state looks, has, is looking on very favorably. They're excited about this. It also is the only, we are the only K-12 school district to receive funding through this ACES program. And I believe we will be the only K-12 schools in the state with a storage array as we go forward. And Enernoch will also manage the software, which is a super important part of the project, which includes monitoring, triggering the battery to deploy and also doing all the reporting and tracking of what's happening. And they will also reserve for themselves the balance of the revenue stream, which won't surprise you. And if I do this right, we'll go on to the next slide. The revenue is going to be generated through four or five streams. And this is, you know, we're going to wade into water here that may be deeper than some of you will care about, but just to give you an, an idea of what's happening, there are, this is, this diagram is what's called peak shaving and the spikes that we generate are very expensive. The high point of what we use each month, the highest 15 minutes of our month turns out to be 50% of what we pay for electricity. And our electricity buy is approximately a million dollars a year. So approximately $500,000 of what we spend is tied to the 15 minute segment each month that's the highest peak. So if you can saw some of those off, you can begin to save significant money. In addition, it, the battery will also make money by talking to, by, by allowing us to participate more effectively in demand response when we are asked to dial down non-critical functions when the grid is stressed. And in addition, the battery will be talking to the grid and discharging services to the grid, electricity by, to contribute to what's called frequency regulation, which is about maintaining 60 hertz on the frequency in the wires so that, and when there's heavy demand, it helps to have a little squirt of electricity to allow the balance in the wires to stay at 60 hertz, for instance. In addition, the battery will allow, will be participating in the forward capacity market, which means it stands ready to provide electricity when the grid operators who huddle in a bunker out in Springfield, Massachusetts deem it necessary. So all of those things allow this storage array to earn revenue. And it is anticipated that we will be receiving a 20, wait, I gotta look and move my slide. So we are, the split is going to be a 77%, 23% split with 77% going to Enernoch and 23% to us. That will add up to approximately $100,000 a year of revenue for the district projected. And all of that is for hosting the, the array on our, on our campus. And I have a link that I'd be happy to provide to people who would like more information. This is, oops, I gotta do this part. This is the site where the storage array is proposed to go in. This is the upper corner of the senior lot at the high school. And the battery array will stretch about 120 feet, which is approximately 10 parking spaces. It will not be in the asphalt. It will be on the turf and into, set into the hill a little bit, but it will run approximately 10 parking spaces about, there are two, there are nine poles that stretch across the top of that lot. The battery will run, will occupy about two thirds of the space between poles one and poles three, which is what you see depicted here. The, the batteries are going to come, the, Enernoch already knows that they will source the batteries from Tesla if the project proceeds. So that's fun. When I talk with students about it, they're all excited that it's Tesla. And the silver baffling around the storage array is to indicate that there, that they will be soundproofing around the enclosure, which I'd be happy to talk more about. I think that's all, the, the size of the array is two megawatt hours and the size of the inverter on the front, which functions as the hose that allows the battery to be deployed, is four megawatt hours. So that tells you that the battery could be drained in 30 minutes. And some people think that's a real wow factor, but that's, you know, that's, that's pretty deep stuff. It can be drained rapidly because they want to be able to deploy it for grid services. And I, I think I want, I would be delighted to answer questions. I think I can stop talking there.
Jenny?
Thank you. I just wanted to know, is it going to make any noise or vibration, even though it's going to have soundproofing around it?
It, the soundproofing is, is the acoustic treatment is expected to reduce the decibels at the property line to zero.
Okay, at the property line of the high school on the other side of those trees?
It is on the other side of those trees. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
At the property line and perhaps even before that, the acoustic, the decibel level is expected to be zero from the array.
Okay, thank you.
At which, and the acoustic treatment is something that we have discussed with them at some length and have insisted that is included.
Okay.
Yep. I think the, I think the, a lot of, some of the sound is from fans, which are used to cool the battery, the batteries.
So Kate, thank you. If you go back to the slide, the second slide, so at the low point, that's when we are actually charging.
It is.
Okay, so that's the cost. Is that right? Because that's electricity being consumed.
Hmm, I'm not sure what you mean when you say that's the cost. We, it doesn't cost us, it will cost us almost nothing to charge this battery.
It's what I'm, you're charging. Yeah, but, but the, the batteries being recharged.
Yes.
And that's coming from the grid, right?
Yes.
And, but it's at night.
Yes.
It's the lowest.
Yes.
Dollars per kilowatt hour.
Yes, exactly.
And then when it's, when it's used, it's at the highest dollar per kilowatt hour.
Exactly, so.
So we're buying low, selling high.
Precisely.
Okay, so.
Indeed.
Did you ever move to Wall Street? Will you let me know?
There's so much more we could talk about. It's really fun stuff, really, really interesting.
Yeah.
And actually, I, I might take the opportunity to say, because a common question I'm getting as I begin to practice talking about this with people, is about whether it's going to be charged up with solar. And that is, that we have some, we have 200 kilowatts of solar on this campus and possibly some of those electrons will flow into this battery array, but that is not the intention. The intention is to allow it to be a good, allow us to be a terrific citizen in terms of how we participate with the grid, as well as reducing our spiky peaks, sawing off the peaks. So between those two activities, the battery is able to generate money. So it's not, it's different than a home, which has solar on the roof and people are living off the grid. This is a much more sophisticated proposition.
Angie?
Yeah, thank you. This looks like a win-win project. I guess the question, because it's at the senior lot, so is there any safety concern? Or, you know, this is a high school, high school kids, so.
Yeah. The, the enclosure will be designed to keep them out and that's, and that's well understood by the contractor. And, and no, there are no, there's no, there's nothing live that's, anybody could interact with. It will be, unfortunately, it will be a very dull installation. I would love to have it be a little more interesting, but we'll have to, I, I look forward to weaving this into some of the educational efforts around the district around energy, but there won't be much to see in the way of a tour. So it, it will be a rectangle with an acoustic treatment and, and very drab boxes inside that pose no safety hazard.
Well, this can be a very stupid question.
Sure.
Is there any way that, because as you know, that about, anything above ground with the New England weather can damage, is there, what's a, you know, go underneath or what's the possibility?
Yeah, these will be very well-built steel cases that will contain the batteries. And there are, you may know that there are, although they fade into the background, there are transformers that are, that are around the campus, two at the high school, one at each of the other big buildings. And people don't pay any attention to them at all because they are painted green and they're meant to sort of disappear, but it will be similar, be very sturdy and, and well-built to protect the equipment inside.
Yeah, I, I know that it would be, it's just the weather that you cannot predict.
Understood.
Thank you. So I have to, thank you, Kate.
Of course.
That sounds like a very good project. I've talked, I talked with Paul this morning already. I have two questions. One is, is there potential, any pollution? And second is, is there, looks like we are not going to spend any dollar. And the one thing could be when we recharge the battery, the recharge is from the, you know, the electricity is from somewhere, you know, you're probably going to pay that, probably you charge in low dollars, you can use in the, so that, that is one thing. What is the hidden cost?
I'm sorry, Eileen.
What is the hidden cost? What is the maintenance, anything after we finish this project, what are we going to spend? What would be the dollars we're going to spend on this project later on?
That's such a good question. And I'm happy to say that the answer is that there are no hidden costs for us. There's a little, very small amount of staff time. Enernoch is carrying the, almost the entire load of this project. I mean, we need to pay attention so that we are well protected and, and also we look forward to integrating this into the learning environment here. And that's a gift, but there, there is no other hidden cost on this. They are required to put the site back to its original condition if we, if, if we want the batteries removed at the end of the 10-year contract. It's quite possible that we'll want to keep them. There is a provision for us to be able to buy the batteries out, which actually looks extremely favorable, but that's a, that's an option that we can choose to exercise or not. So we'll, we'll, we'll sort this out as we go along.
I'm sorry. So what about after 10 years then?
They're responsible for removing the, if we wish, they're responsible for removing the batteries and returning the site to its original condition.
So what, what about we have to buy it? So what could be that cost?
We, we, we will have the option to buy it and we'll, we'll understand more about that in a year or two and whether that's favorable. And, and we'll return to you at that time if we think that's a, something that we would recommend you consider. So there's no obligation to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Given that we're going to be the only public school district with this battery energy storage system, are there any opportunities to have students learn about it and integrate it into the curriculum?
And I didn't even ask you to ask me that question, but in fact, Arnav Mayra, who Peter Kavanaugh was talking about, who's the student who was part of the handbook committee, has been writing me about geothermal energy and he and I got to meet today. And we went, no, that's not him. And we went walking. We walked, we looked around Larry several times and I talked to him about the storage array and he was all excited. And I also do, I go in once a year to the environment, advanced placement environmental science classes and do, we do an energy tour of the high school. And so I've been, you know, already talking with them about what might happen and they'll be delighted to learn about this. I'm the advisor for the resource force team. They're working on how we might make a video and get information out. And I know the other green teams will be interested. It's, it's a, it's an exciting, and in addition to the energy curriculum that happens is, I've already been talking with the curriculum people about how we might, I mean, this is, this is a lithium ion battery, which is what kids, every kid has and most kids have in their pockets. It's what we are beginning to drive our cars with. It's a, you know, the, the tie-ins are spectacular in terms of educational possibilities. It's really wonderful. Thank you for asking.
I'm probably asking the obvious, but did council look at the contract?
Yes, they have.
Because in, in reading the contract, I mean, just, there's a lot that falls to us that, it wasn't necessarily clear to me, like things like the host's failure to cure any host event or, you know, obviously any, any damage. So I, I just wanted to make sure that we're protected.
Indeed. And I bet JD's probably nodding behind me and he'd be, he'd be delighted to speak to that.
Yeah, so we actually, we worked with our council from Stoneman-Chandler-Miller to go over, you know, the contract in its general form. And we worked with our council or, or the council representatives, Cabot Risk Management or MIA, which is our insurance carrier to review all the insurance requirements. The only thing, it would take like an extreme act of God, you know, a tree to fall and, you know, some gross negligence on our part, you know, that, that would put us at risk in terms of service damages clause. You know, so I feel very comfortable with it. I, I will say, you know, this is from, from our council, just in kind of the, the closing of all the loops, last email Christine Goldman had sent me, she's like, she's, I think this is a well-negotiated contract and I believe that in my discussions with you, you have a good sense of what your obligations are under the contract and what your liability could be. I think this last round of edits really tightened up the contract around a fair and equitable to you. Of course, as with any contract, there are risks that need to be understood and weighed here. And I want you to feel that you've gotten the support you need to be able to do that. Please review it fully and don't hesitate to call me anytime. We feel, I feel great about it.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you. Bet that passed unanimously.
Thank you, Kate, very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, JD. The next document on the agenda is the single-tier transportation update. JD will provide you with a status report on the implementation of single-tier busing at the elementary, I'm sorry.
Authorize the superintendent to enter into the agreement.
Yeah, why don't you, yeah.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Great, thanks.
Thank you. Good catch, good clarification. So JD is going to provide a status report on the implementation of single-tier elementary busing and...
You good? Okay, super. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm so glad that the Mallett family were here tonight. I'm glad that the Simon family was here a couple meetings ago or last meeting. This would be a great opportunity to talk through some of those issues and some of the questions or the gray areas of risk assessment, right? So with that, just some quick background information for those at home or, you know, relatively new to this. The single elementary tier, you know, busing system has been, you know, a bit of a unicorn, I think, for the... I think, for the district for quite a long time. It's, it's always kind of been deemed, you know, significantly too expensive when weighing other items around budget season and, you know, in terms of long-term planning. And the scope is large, you know, especially when you look at, you know, where we were when I first started working here, you know, we were running 24 bus routes. That got up to 26, went back down to 25. K through, when we went K through 12, we went to 32. We're currently running 33 at the elementary, and, you know, now we're moving up to 40. We're almost doubling, you know, the size of our transportation department, if you think about the scope of, of what this means. So, you know, the driving force behind this, to, to move this forward, certainly has been the school start times. The school start times, I don't think, move forward without the idea of changing the tiers. I think there's too many local social issues with schedule and personal schedules and personal lives that would, that would prohibit that based on the work we did around start time study committees. So, and when we really got serious talking about start times in October, we started working concurrently with a GIS Department of a civil engineering firm, Greenham Peterson GPI, they're out of Woburn. There's, they authored the original report that talked about efficiencies and finding ways to streamline the process or the routes, if you will, the system. That's where you've, you know, we talked about cul-de-sacs about this time last year. And they have some other items in there, cluster stopping and walk zones and stuff. And we'll talk more about that as we keep going. So, so they, they developed a baseline system for us that we simulated in November on Election Day. Some of you may remember the communication that went out to families, saying, "Don't, don't put the kids on the bus, they're just driving by," right? But, so what we're doing now, and we have been doing, is optimizing those routes, evaluating potential bus stops, and inputting our institutional knowledge into the system. And I'll explain what that means as well as we move forward. So some of our operational considerations are things that are somewhat unique to us. The, we have centralized schools and decentralized population centers. We have a bit of a yin and yang with, with, you know, where people are and where they need to get to. That's unique. Typically, you see more neighborhood school settings and things like that, certainly at the elementary level in communities. We have to adhere to regional transportation requirements, which is a little different. There's, just very quickly, you know, a, a public school system that's not regional, you need to provide transportation to everyone outside of a two-mile range. We, we don't have that here. We have to provide transportation to all students. And we'll talk about walk zones, you know, in, in a bit when we start talking about routing parameters. We have choice, and I have some images, I think, that will show how choice complicates the, the network. And I don't mean that to be derogatory or anything, it's just, it is what it is, it complicates our systems. Routing parameters, you know, we have our own local routing parameters here, and we'll talk through those as well. Driver, the shortage of drivers is not unique to us. This is a national issue, certainly in the Commonwealth. But we feel like we've made great strides in that area as well. Our schools aren't super conducive to lots of buses. We have bad footprints in terms of the parking and ins and outs and in those kind of vehicular access points. Look forward to designing a school that doesn't have those issues. And we also have to consider parking, the facility at which we maintain them, and our staffing levels if they're appropriate. So currently, what we're proposing and where we are, if you recall, the, that original report, I believe, was, you know, estimating like 42 bus routes. We think we're in about the 40 range right now. Currently, we run 66 elementary routes, 33 the first time, and 33 the second time. High school, junior high is 32. You might wonder why there's a difference. In October this year, we had a, you know, a change with cross-town busing, and we, we had to add a, a bus to accommodate another, a fourth cross-town bus into Boxborough from Acton. And because we were, we couldn't get kids to school on time, and you'll see some of those complications as well, some of these images that are coming up. So we need, 42 school bus drivers is what we would need to, to run the 40 routes. There's a couple spare drivers built in. I can't think of too many times where we've had our full staff here on a given day. You know, it's, you know, someone's always ill. There's actually a lot of injuries in, in the driver world. There's a lot of shoulder injuries, a lot of back injuries. And, you know, I, I don't think that's unique to us. And we would be proposing an additional 10 buses to get to 46. That would really give us four spare, full-size buses. We have, the 46 total includes a wheelchair-accessible bus, which has less seats than our 83-passenger. So if you think about a crisis situation where we need to go and collect after there was a fender bender or an accident or something, and we need to collect the 65 students off of a bus in North Acton, we can't run up there with the, the 43-passenger bus or even a wheelchair bus in most, not without putting kids standing in, in, in certain areas, which we would rather not do. So that would really give us four real spare buses, which is 10% of fleet, which is the industry standard. The expenses, we budgeted $750,000. I, I think we should feel very comfortable about that. Based on where we are right now, it, it looks like it's going to come in around 650 to 700. If you want to talk about, you know, money later, we certainly can, but I'll just keep going. But next steps for us is to work with David's department and his team to reclassify that lump sum of $750,000 we carried in the budget into the appropriate line items. Some would go into human resources. Actually, that, that would be it, then the rest would stay in, in our 3300 series, which is transportation. So, our timeline, moving forward. So, present day, up to the end of July, we will evaluate all the routes and bus stops to ensure we are meeting our parameters associated with routing. We'll be recruiting, we'll be hiring, and we'll be communicating to the community. Just to kind of put things in perspective, you know, the number of bus stops for us, I mean, currently, the, the number that we're working with on this baseline that we're, you know, trying to perfect is 2,400, you know? So if you think about that across the entire community. So then we come to August, the first two weeks of August, we will build our new students into the routes, meaning like the folks that we find out about that'll move in through the course of summer. I'm sure more will come after this period, and we'll, that's a constant-changing item for us. We'll build transfers in. Every year, it seems that some people, you know, might have had a lottery wish in the year before, a seat opens up, so they'll move from Gates to Blanchard, Blanchard to Conant, whatever it may be. We have permanent bus pass changes at that point, too, so we have to take people from their home location and placement, you know, whether it be ITC or Kinder Care or Fun Learning or the extended day at the admin building or the other school buildings. And we'll also be hiring, recruiting, and communicating to the community about where we are in this process and what they should expect going forward. The last three weeks of August, drivers will go through route assignment process, we'll publish the routes, and we'll do extensive training of our drivers. We're really trying this year to, to step up our process around training drivers around just student management, you know, de-escalation and things like that, to, to try and help them have some tools in their tool bag to work with students and help encourage them to be safe riders. And we'll begin evaluating the impacts of last-minute changes, you know? They will come. There will be a number of folks who, who won't communicate with us at all until the first week of September about what their needs are. And, you know, this is super complicated for us. And, and again, I'll, some of these images I'll show, you know, reveal that. But just to talk a little bit about our, our routing parameters here, hopefully we can come back to this and talk about cul-de-sacs in a minute, but the, the routes have to be safe. We believe that they are. We believe that the stops are safe. We don't, Chris, Detective Prell and I, the detective for the, the town of Acton, who acts as the safety officer, has had that role for a long time. Before him, it was Bob Cowan. He was in that role for about 20 years before he retired. You know, we understand that if, first of all, we care deeply about the kids, all of them, him and I. And we understand that it's on us, you know, if, if something happens. We get it, you know? So we take that very seriously. We try and make any and all changes that, that remove as much gray as possible when you're talking about risk assessment. You know, we could have the most benign neighborhood, you could have a bus rear-ended. We certainly have plenty of distracted drivers out there, we're sharing the roads with them. We have a lot of commuters passing through our community. So we certainly understand the risk associated with, with all these things. And ultimately, what risk we're willing to tolerate, we need some, some feedback from, from our board, you know, about what those things are. Under this current model, we've been encouraged to evaluate and try and create more cluster stopping to eliminate the, the more door-to-door that you see now. And we're, we always pay very special attention to our kindergarten riders, we'll try and migrate stops in those situations. And we are targeting a ridership of about 55 high school students per route and about 60 at the elementary level. So I know you mean, 83 passenger vehicles, 83 means three to a seat, you know, which doesn't really fit very well with high school age and junior high age individuals. So we target our arrival time to be approximately about 10 minutes before bell. So this is the drive time in our community to the, to the high school, junior high school. All the white dots are our students, and all the blue are, is a five-minute ride, green is a 10-minute ride, and the red is a 20-minute ride potentially. So this is just to give you some, some idea of, of the, the first, the first tier, if you will, and what we'll be running. So we'll, the, these buses will head out from the bus lot, they'll collect students, and you figure those that are collecting in the far ends of Boxborough and the far ends of North Acton, from that collection point alone to the school could be easily 20 minutes in, in that time of day. Now, when you factor in choice and, and our elementary choice process, this is the drive time to Conant? To Blanchard? To Gates and Douglas? So just imagine what happens to a, a routing system when this student transfers to, to Conant, right? There's no more here, you know? So that's, so just getting, because we've already, we start, we're starting at the campus, which is right here, if you're looking at Conant. We have to get here to here, which is almost 20 minutes alone, and then 20 minutes back to Conant, you have 40 minutes. So we're trying to keep all rides under 45, the drive time. So that could easily happen in November, you know, which means we might have to manipulate three routes and then communicate those changes out to 150 families, because they have, those three routes might have 50, you know, students riding on them. So it, it gets to be very complicated, you know, when working through choice. And this is, to me, the best, you know, many, many, many people's, you know, what's the cost of choice? What does choice mean from a transportation standpoint? It's so hard to articulate. And, and this, to me, visually speaks to it as well as anything. Cluster stopping is something that we've talked about. This is an example of a cluster stop that's currently, that was currently in our routes. This is one that we will change, and I just want to talk a second about why, right? So, so this is Gray Road, this is the bus route, you can see the arrows, it means the bus is going in this direction. This is taken from our routing software. These individuals have been clustered into a stop here. The bus is only going in this direction, and we would never have students cross Gray Road, right? So this bus needs to go up Gray Road and down Gray Road, or two buses are going, one one up, one one down, you know? So, so that's a situation where we have to take that cluster and, and break it apart, which adds a domino effect, right, on the other routes and the other stops, et cetera. This is a cluster stop that would work, right? This is Agawam. And just, you know, pretend for a second that, that these children are not Stonestars from Douglas, because I would imagine these are walkers, right? I'm just trying to illustrate our thought process around a cluster stop that, that would be sound, right? This is a very safe neighborhood, very residential, kids are walking and playing on these streets all the time. You know, having a stop here, which is, you know, probably less than two city blocks from, from here, we think would be very reasonable for, for people, to be able to accommodate people. We talked a little bit about walk zones. So, you know, first of all, we've said that legally, we have to transport all students because we're a regional school district. There's probably some ways that, that, that you could make walk zones happen, you know, just by being somewhat creative with routing. You know, we don't, we have an obligation to provide a bus stop within a mile of a, of a home at this age, high school, junior high, that we're looking at right here. But I just wanted to talk through what that means, right? So these are all, all these students at the high school, junior high within a mile, right? You know, we can't assume that these individuals, women and men, are going to walk through the woods to campus. We can't assume that, first of all, if we were to make a bus stop a mile away, that, that adhered to the law, right? The bus stop would be over here, and we would be telling people, essentially, you're a walker, right? It makes no sense for you to walk to that bus stop, you know? Seems a little disingenuous. So maybe at half a mile. So at half a mile, those are our students at the high school, junior high, right? Maybe a quarter mile, maybe a quarter mile is more reasonable, right? So that's our quarter-mile students, right? So this is, this is why I don't think the walk zone thing is all that relevant to us. We also have, you know, maybe there's other creative ways to accomplish the exact same thing, maybe there's an opt-out, you know, a walker opt-out, maybe we could pose that to families. I don't think we've ever done that before. Could be something that we could try. Perhaps we could, you know, well, we, well, we do do this, but we do encourage the walking school bus, Safe Roosts School programs and things like that in certain areas. Indian Village has a, or has had a vibrant walking school bus in the past. So there's some other ideas about that, but I, I don't think creating a walk zone does a lot for us, other than maybe hurts politically. The need for communication. So, you know, we, a need exists to, to communicate with the community about these changes. You know, your, your bus driver probably is going to be different. You know, some folks might have had the same bus driver for the last 15 years. The likelihood of that happening is, is pretty random in terms of how it would go next year, you know? So that, that'll be different in and of itself. We have some opportunities with our, with some new technologies that have come into the district in the last year, with, working with Brigitte Sealy, the Power School Expert. We could probably write a little bit of code that will allow us to have a, what's the right computer science term, but to, to have a field where we can select a route and be able to communicate directly with those parents on just that route. We currently don't have that, but that's something that would be wildly beneficial. We're also looking at some, some tools for handheld device alerts, you know, like a "Here Comes a Bus" type app. The one that we had talked about last year, doing some trials with it, it, it was awful. And, you know, we're gonna, we want to find the right solution that doesn't create more concerns or more questions for, for families. And we need to produce some publicized procedures, we think, that are tied to our transportation policies, so hopefully trying to eliminate some of these questions. That can kind of stand behind and, and have those there that we can point to for the community, that, you know, so they have a better understanding of, of the process that we go through to, to try and make sure that we're providing a safe system. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to... So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to talk. I have some other images of the elementary schools and how far people are away from them, but, um, I think the other ones made the point as well, so, um, I'd like to turn it over to you guys. Bridget?
So thanks, J D. This helps to put some, some flavor around the complexity of our district. And I've been one of the people who said, okay, what does choice cost? And I still press for that in terms of dollars. Hopefully, I know it's complicated, but I think it is possible to get some estimates around that when you just look at, especially if you have, uh, technology involved. But anyway, I don't wanna beat that drum anymore. But can you talk a little bit about the cul-de-sac issue?
Absolutely.
And the, and the things that have been raised? Cause I know safety, of course, that's the top priority and I have no doubt that's the top priority of the district as a whole, but I think it would help, given some of the conversations that we've heard from families.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Um, so, you know, there's, um, there's well over a hundred cul-de-sacs in Acton and Boxborough. I expected there to be more issues around this. The, the issue with Mallett Drive, uh, came up last year in the fall. You know, the, the routes change every year, uh, especially for the elementary levels because of the, the flipping of the schedule, uh, and new people and choice and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. In that, that sixteen year, uh, they did not have a door-side pickup. And that route was very long and was having a timing issue, uh, getting to school on time. We couldn't figure out a way to reverse that. And Chris made the decision, uh, that we should go in to Mallett that year, uh, and we didn't, um, or continue to, right? And we did. Uh, the next year, when we built the routes, uh, and the cul-de-sac issue was more prominent, we had discussed it in the spring, we built the routes, uh, uh, around those, uh, we reversed the route and provided for a door-side pickup at that location. So it's, you know, specific to that. We felt like and we do feel like that, that it's, it provides for a safe and reasonable stop, you know? That, that feels gross to say, because I don't wanna invalidate anyone's opinions or anyone's feelings, you know? And it doesn't feel good to, to be in a situation where you're making those judgments. Uh, that's why I, I, uh, thank goodness for Chris and having his support. If, if anyone has suggestions around better ideas or better ways to do it, certainly willing to listen, uh, but we think that this is a process that has been in place for a long time, uh, that has served well in, in the district. I can say that if we were to not go into the Strawberry Hill Road, the two that you heard about Strawberry Hill Road, if we were not to go into Mallett, I mean, if we were to go into them because those were deemed safety issues, um, I don't think it would be reasonable to, to say to anyone that we're not going in their cul-de-sac, you know? Uh, so I, I think that's, that's something that we really need to, to think about and talk about, unless there is an extreme situation. If there is a safety issue, um, that, uh, again, that is deemed to be an issue there, then we need to do it. We need to, to keep them safe first, but Mary, sorry.
So J D, I'm sorry, do you, whenever there's an issue at all that comes out, no matter what, any kind of, anything that anyone brings to you, do you always consult with Officer Prell?
Oh, absolutely.
Always?
Always.
Okay, that's, all right, go ahead.
Officer Prell is in our office probably once a day.
Okay.
So I have two comments related to this and, and I think you do understand, it's really hard to sit here and hear the parents' concern and then just say, well, it's not enough. So, um, you know, I just imagine if it were me. So when I read the earlier material about safety, the big issue with cul-de-sacs is the backing up. But from what I understood from the two who came forward, and I have to say, I don't know Acton well, I'm not sure if I'm in two, if we're talking about two different areas or near areas, but it sounded like a bus could go in and out without backing up. So it's not as much of a time issue, it's not the safety issue of backing up. And so I wonder, maybe the policy is not all cul-de-sacs, but cul-de-sacs that have room to drive in and come out without backing up, we consider going in. And then second, when you make this assessment, you know, you're setting up your schedules in August, are you thinking about the snowbanks, the visibility and all of that? Because that, it changes the scenario. And when I look at the package they provided, every example, there were five accident reports and they were in December, January and February.
Yeah, so I'm so glad you said that about the snowbanks, because that, when you said, we were talking about the circumference or the, uh, the diameter of the, the cul-de-sac, the turnaround, um, we think of them with, uh, three-foot snowbanks on, on all sides, right? So, uh, you also gotta think of them with landscape trucks parked in, in, in them, uh, you know, with large trailers and lots of equipment and five guys with backpack blowers. Uh, so that's, that's what we're thinking about, you know? So just because there's a large open area, um, at that moment, uh, we have to, to assume that there's gonna at least be the width of a vehicle on the side, um, or, uh, we plan for winter, you know? Uh, so that's an issue. I mean, if, if we're gonna, uh, so, so to do it only in the winter or to not do it in the winter, you know, seems kind of counterintuitive, right? The, what we encourage people to do in, in those situations, uh, Strawberry Hill, Adams Street, uh, is to, to wait back, you know, wait for the bus to come to a complete stop, make eye contact with the bus driver and use the thumbs up protocol, uh, to approach the bus. We're not asking anyone to wait right on the street. Uh, we certainly, uh, try and work with families to, to make those accommodations, uh, and, and that's our intent. Um, so for there, for there to be that kind of room in the winter, uh, that needs to be a very, very large cul-de-sac. And I don't know how many of those there are, but there's not many. There's many that we can't even do in the, on great days.
Just thanks, that helps, J D. And one other comment, and I think it applies to the, um, the families that were here tonight. It sounds like it's a curve, et cetera. Better signage on the road can really help that. A blinking school bus ahead sign on the side of the road before a curve. I mean, that's not necessarily a district issue, but I'm sure working with the town, that helps tremendously, getting something that, you know, has lights that catches your attention, so I'm sure I'm not thinking about anything that you guys haven't thought about, but.
Bridget, in terms of, of signage and blinking lights, uh, I, I was noting, I, I wrote a note to myself when, uh, when the parents were, were, uh, bemoaning that that was something that was talked about, but it hadn't happened yet. And I, I don't know if there was a formal process that was even begun, but I, I do know, my understanding is that municipalities do not have, uh, municipalities, if they want to put signage up, uh, on a public way or even lights, they need to work with the state in order to get approval to do that. I'm not sure if that's for every road in a community, uh, but, uh, I, I remember during my time in Winchester, uh, that was, that was a process that the town had to go through. We were looking at, at, at all of our school zones and looking to, uh, uh, to provide additional signage lights. The town had hired a, an engineer, uh, consultant to, to look at that. And I know that it took, I mean, it was, it was above an eighteen-month process from beginning to end. And in every location, we, we needed state approval before we could, uh, do anything like that. And, and the state has certain parameters and regulations that have to be followed. But that's something we can, we can certainly talk to the town about.
Couple of things. I was disappointed in the walk zone, because that was a hundred and ninety-five kids who could potentially get to school by foot. So, um, why assume no forest? Is it because of the snow in the winter?
I'm sorry.
Why can't they just cut through the forest? Why are you assuming that's not?
Oh, uh, just because that's the way the, the state laws determines the distance. It's the, the, the path of least resistance, uh, has to be a safe walk along the road.
Okay. Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about, um, your process going forward? One of the slides said that in the summer, um, you were gonna complete the, the vetting process in terms of the safety. I wasn't aware that, um, I was aware that you, that you, that you had implemented the cul-de-sac, um, protocol suggested by, by G P I this year, um, but I didn't know that you had also implemented some of the cluster stops?
No.
Or is that just in the simulation or?
Correct, yeah. Just, so the cluster stops, the, the stops that we're working through right now, uh, they include some of these clusters, like the one I, I told you we would like to break up, uh, those were there for the simulation, you know? So that was an opportunity. We have notes from every driver about those stops and those locations. So it certainly helps us target where those areas are. But, you know, applying the local knowledge, uh, to this, you know, that's where, uh, that's where we make our greatest returns, right? So, uh, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to have Janice Nichols in the office. Jen is our, uh, had replaced Ed Weiner, who was our manager last year. She's been outstanding. Uh, Janice has been working for nearly twenty years, uh, driving a bus here or working in the office, uh, and her local knowledge of every road and, you know, those hazards, you know, is, is bountiful. The, the thing is, you know, um, you know, no one could tell you what the traffic's like on Windsor as well as I could. You know, I live on Windsor, you know? I know what's there, I know when things are there, I know when it's busy, I know when people are going too fast, you know, to, you know, what time of day those things are. When, if you live on Adams Street, uh, you know, and, you know, Adams is a bit of a cutthroat to Maynard for Parker, uh, there's, um, uh, you know, those individuals know that place and have seen things there that, that only they have seen and, and they experience every day, you know? So, uh, that's why, they've been nothing but classy and, and I don't wanna, uh, you know, it, it doesn't feel very comfortable, like, you know, feeling, you know, that, uh, that I'm disagreeing with that assessment. Uh, but all we can do is trying and put things in place that we feel like makes those individuals as safe as possible. And from a timing perspective, um, you know, uh, I have GPS data, we could, we could simulate it, uh, but, you know, it's, it's that compounded, you know, uh, across the system, so.
I read in your note that was in our packet, um, that because of neighborhood bottlenecks, you're gonna have to go back to combining some of, so what does that mean? Does that mean like kids will get dropped off at Conan and then that bus will travel on to?
Yeah, that's exactly what that means. The, uh, uh, you probably, you know, didn't experience this much, Tessa, but, uh, right before K.
I grew up with it because I went to Conan.
Right, 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 right. I forgot, I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, but, uh, you know, pre-K through twelve, uh, Parker Damon and Conan were, were piled together. Uh, when we started taking on, uh, the Blanchard transportation system, uh, we took that opportunity on that flip-flop schedule or the, the tiers to use those exact same buses from Blanchard to, to separate Conan. But if we're doing this on a single tier, uh, you're gonna have, you know, three, it would've been four, four buses concurrently, uh, you know, driving by your, your house, you know? And that's, uh, what we were finding on the simulation, and that's not even doing it for real, right? They're under this backing right up on each other. And it's, uh, so we have to alleviate that for it to make it work.
So just getting, getting back to the parents' concerns, um, I, I, so I, um, uh, wasn't here for the meeting where Mr. Simon voiced some concerns, uh, but I, I watched the video and went to Strawberry Hill to check that out. I'm, I'm not an expert, I'm, I'm not sure what I was looking at, but I do, I did remember it being on a curve and on a hill. And it doesn't take much for me to picture the winter. And so I'm wondering, you know, uh, if we can have some exceptions for certain criteria that these cul-de-sacs are on. I can't imagine all cul-de-sacs are on a, a hill on a curve. But I, I don't see that issue as being an all or nothing type issue. So, so if there's certain cul-de-sacs that are, you know, have, uh, some features that are, are, make it unique, I, I think maybe we should have some flexibility in that policy.
I agree with you, Paul, I just wanna comment on that real quick. The, um, so we don't see it as black and white either, right? And, you know, I, I think that if we service those cul-de-sacs, uh, we should be servicing all cul-de-sacs for the same reason, you know? And I say all, you know, uh, maybe I'm embellishing that, but eighty percent? You know, I mean, it's, uh, uh, you know, there's decent sightlines from where the bus is coming from, it's a door-side pickup, uh, the area where the curve is, uh, is approaching, you know? So, you know, if you think about, you know, the, the great concern there at that location would be, uh, the, at first, the child was crossing, right? We reversed the route, so it was door-side. So the, there's a nice long straightaway to see the back of the bus at that location. And then coming up from the front, you know, the child's not in the street, you know, so if someone is coming by for whatever reason, but you, you, an accident could happen anywhere, you know? So you, you always have that.
So, um, actually, at, at the time I went, I, I didn't even know which, which direction the bus was heading. So the, so the bus then would be door-side to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, when they voiced their concerns, we reversed that route to try and, uh, make that accommodation. You know, it, it provided door-side service, uh, to that location as well as Jay Lane up, which was, is actually on a different tier, uh, but, uh, they had the same question, you know?
I'm sorry, J D. I hope someone can ask my question, but finally, I, 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 I will ask some detailed questions. Before I do that, I would like to thank you for your wonderful team, always drive our kids safely around for the whole year the school year will pass. Thank you so much. You know, you have the, the slide, sixty over six, sixty-six over sixty, what does that mean? I didn't hear that.
Over here?
Back, back a little bit more.
Oh. Oh, yes.
Sixty-six over sixty, what, what?
Yeah, so that's the total number of elementary routes currently. Uh, there's thirty-three, uh, first, uh, for one tier, and then there's, so that would be, uh, Parker Damon and Conan, and then there's another thirty-three routes. So in total, we run sixty-six in sixty, AM and PM.
Okay, got that, thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, I have another question is, um, do we still keep, um, you know, I think my background is, um, I, my background, the background information for me is I like to, um, agree with, um, Bridget, um, but it's so hard to, for us to give up the choice, the free choice of the elementary school, right? And it's so hard, but if without that, we're probably gonna save a lot of cost. But we can't talk about that over here right now. So, uh, my second question is, um, do we still have the door-to-door, um, service for the kindergartner?
You know, that's a, uh, that's also a bit of a general term. Uh, we try and provide, or we currently have tried to provide to migrate bus stops in neighborhoods, uh, to kindergarten houses. You know, the, uh, we've never had a situation where all kindergarteners are, are door-to-door or front door pickup, right? Uh, but in all situations where we can, uh, uh, you know, if, if there's some discretion to, to move it here or there, we always try and lean towards that, in that direction.
So, um, that, that gonna lead my third question. I hope we can combine a kindergartner pickup and drop-off, because forty-five minutes right on the bus really concerns me. You know, we probably, next step, I know you have a lot of, um, smart ways and the bus right now running so smoothly at the end of the year and it could be ten minutes ahead of the schedule, but to me right now, forty-five is really a lot of time.
Yeah.
Spent on the bus, because think about the one with forty-five, the other, you know, the round trip will be one and a half hour.
Yeah.
Someone's kids, probably not mine, but they're gonna be on the bus for one and a half hour every day. That's just, uh, you know, so I think from, to me, the task is try to make the time less than less for any kids, you know, stay in the bu, on the bus.
Sure.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. The, you know, just to clarify that. The, you know, just to clarify that, that forty-five minute parameter, that's like a, a number we enter into the software for, to routing, so, you know, that's, it's like a cutoff point, right? So, you know, I can tell you that I think on average, if I remember correctly, the average ride time is about twenty-eight minutes, and, you know, the folks that are riding a bus, and I'm talking about ride time, that are riding a bus about forty minutes is probably one, two percent of the population.
I'm still on the cul-de-sac. So, if you feel like if we were going to do something for these two cases, we should do it for everyone, could I ask you to simulate, you've got the data in there, simulate going into all the cul-de-sacs, what's the cost, do you need an extra bus now? And what's the, if you do that time map, what's the impact on how many kids push out? And then we could see that. Because if there's a low to no cost and not a huge time impact, then I'd rather go back to going in the cul-de-sacs.
Yep, yep. So, the reason I say that too is, again, and Bridgette and Jane both, you know, counsel in the room, you know, it's a, you know, making that risk assessment, that safety assessment is very gray, you know? You have to just, you know, use the tools you have in front of you to make those assessments, and that's why I say that. I would also say that what we try and do around cluster stopping, you know, in areas where we feel like it's very safe, I would strongly encourage you to consider this same conversation around cul-de-sacs and apply that to cluster stops, right? Because you're going to be, we're not putting people, we don't, we're not going to put people in unsafe situation, but the cluster stop is less safe than the stop in front of your house. You know, so you're, the most optimal safe thing we can do for every student is to pick them up at your front door, you know, and that's, so that's the starting point, and everything from there is a little less safe, and a little less safe, and a little less safe, you know? So, for us, it's about drawing the line, you know, with safety and efficiency and being able to provide a service that, you know, works within these parameters, you know, maybe it needs to be a fifty-five minute ride, or maybe we need forty-five buses, but, so this is, this is just where we landed, and I really appreciate this feedback because, you know, this is something that we struggle with constantly, you know?
I'm a little more comfortable with the cluster because we've been doing it in Boxborough, right? It's, that's the way, once you go to the region, you go, I mean, I'm on a street that Liberty Square, it's off of Liberty Square, and you walk to one end or the other onto Liberty Square, so that, I guess because I'm used to it.
Yeah.
But with this new change, just if we have the data, we can model and see the impact.
Absolutely.
Diane? Oh, sorry. So this summer, when you do the vetting, when you complete that, what does that, what does that look like in terms of just the safety component? Not the, not the time, not the, you know, the forty-five minute max time?
Yeah.
Just, just for the safety component, what is the plan to complete the vetting process this summer?
Sure, sure. So if we have areas that we, that are concerning, we physically go there and we physically look at some of the things that Paula just mentioned, you know, curves, sightlines, are we providing a door-side or non-door-side? Is, and that's what we're evaluating from a, from a safety standpoint. So we will, you know, those areas that we, that we know of, you know, that are disconcerning, we, you know, we physically go there and we evaluate them through that lens.
One more quick thing. In looking at the materials that we had at our last meeting, which included the handbook on, I can't remember what exactly it was called, but it was on bus, bus stop safety or how to evaluate, there was a whole section in there. I mean, it's not just about the school district evaluating the stops, it's also about families evaluating how their students are getting to the bus stop.
Yes.
And I'm not suggesting that the parents that came up and talked to us aren't already walking out with their kids, but that's a really important part of it too, to make sure that as families, we're sending our kids out to the bus stop in a safe manner, and oftentimes that means escorting them as well and having a safe place to stop. I know I lived on a cul-de-sac, same as Mary, I had to walk my kids up the block to catch the bus, and, you know, that's just the way it was. But, and the second thing is, I just wanted to clarify based on something Eileen said, I wasn't suggesting that we stop school choice.
Oh.
I was only suggesting that we understand the cost of the busing for school choice to help us make more informed decisions going forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, because our policies on transportation have not been updated since we fully regionalized, I think that this is a really great opportunity between now and the fall, and the sooner the better, to update the policies with all of these changes.
Yeah, that's great. Beth reached out a couple weeks ago to try to get that on the, on one of the policies of committee agendas, I believe.
Christine, did you want to? Okay.
Sorry, I'll try to be brief. Christine Russell, I am on the finance committee, however, I'm just here as a resident, and full disclosure, Sarah Russell of Two Mayette Road is my sister-in-law, so two of these kids are my niece and nephew on Mayette Road. And I just want to push back a little bit on the idea that if you look at one cul-de-sac and find an issue that you have to change the policy for all cul-de-sacs, if there was a spot where we had a bus stop on a main road and it was found that that was a very accident-prone spot, making that bus stop a different spot wouldn't mean making all bus stops different spots. So I just want to push back a little bit on the idea that the safety of all cul-de-sacs is the same as the safety of one cul-de-sac, and ask you to reconsider based on all of the police reports and the fact that the fire chief went to Sarah and said, please give them this information about the accident that happened while I was at an accident. So, that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Yeah, can I just say, I spoke to that, to the firefighter that they were referring to, so I did have some firsthand knowledge of that situation. And secondly, that's, that's not what I'm saying, that, you know, I'm saying that if you assess the safety of those two situations, you would apply the exact same risk, you know, to others as well, right? It's not, again, it's not, I don't want to be, you know, it's not, it's looking at all of our cul-de-sacs, right? It's a very short cul-de-sac, it's a very wide cul-de-sac, there's a lot of room to wait, in our opinion, that cul-de-sac is very safe in comparison to all the cul-de-sacs in our communities, right? That's, that's how we feel about it. I'm not saying that you need to do this or that, I'm saying that those are two situations that we feel like are safe, right? So that, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Thanks JD for all of this.
Thank you all.
I'm going to move us forward, we're running really late, so I-
Sorry.
No, it's not your fault. No, I think we've had really, really great discussions tonight, so I'm not feeling, I feel like it was very productive. Let's go to the budget update.
Thank you very much. So you have, you've been presented, you were sent with your packet, the third quarter financial presentation. It's a little daunting to me that in some respects, it seems like I just got here and we're already, we don't have the landing gear down, but we're certainly starting the descent for the fiscal year. We've sent out a year-end closing memo to the, to the budget administrative staff, and the finance and HR staff continually perform account analysis with the HR department in particular for the personnel costs, so the, so this report that you have has the best information so far this year, obviously so since three-quarters of the year has passed, but we're better able to project now to the remainder of the year. The reports are presented in a manner that hopefully you now find somewhat familiar. We've made a couple of minor tweaks to this quarter. And also, I received several questions forwarded to me by the superintendent, and I'll attempt to answer those as I, as I walk you through the material. So if you start with the overview section, the top half of this page shows current projections for where we will end up for both revenues and expenditures versus budget. The reports for both revenues and expenditures are included, but this overview shows a projected positive variance or budget surplus for fiscal eighteen of, I want to make sure I have this right, yeah, of a little over a million dollars. I made one last adjustment and didn't know if I changed my notes accordingly, so a little over a million dollars positive variance for the year. The projection's likely going to change, obviously, as we go through the closing process, and in particular as we analyze the open encumbrance, the open encumbrances that are reflected in the numbers. On the bottom half of the, of this overview page, I've added the, an analysis of the district's E and D, and how the budget variance would impact the district's E and D as of July 1, 2018. So E and D is calculated officially on the first day of each, of each fiscal year. You can see the two uses of E and D, the feasibility study and prospectively for the FY nineteen budget, and even with drawing down almost a million and a half dollars, we still should have a little over four percent remaining in E and D to begin FY nineteen. I'm aware that at this time last year, the district determined that it could use some of what otherwise would have flowed to E and D and advance paid mostly capital, some capital expenditures. We'll be scrutinizing whether to do something similar before the end of this year, and we plan to make a recommendation thereby at the June seven meeting. So questions on the overview page? The next report is an analysis of district revenues. Over ninety-nine percent of the district's revenues are essentially fixed at the beginning of the year in town assessments and state aid, but it's the other one percent from which there's a fairly significant and positive budget variance. The district's decision to engage Lower Pioneer Valley Collaborative several, several years ago continues to pay off in terms of increasing Medicaid reimbursement. FY eighteen is the first year that we've budgeted anything for this revenue source, and for FY nineteen, excuse me, we've increased the budget to try to more closely approximate our anticipated reimbursement, while at the same time maintaining some conservatism because of the uncertainty of dealing with a federal program and potential funding swings in that program. Investment income is up from budget, and especially so from the previous year due to increases in rates of return. What we did for this projection is we extrapolated the first nine months of investment income to the end of the year, and note that in FY nineteen, the budget admittedly looks pretty conservative. On the other hand, FY nineteen will be the first year since full regionalization that there's been any revenue budgeted for investment income. Rental income reflects the last year with significant income from case, we've got a hundred percent of it in the door for 2018. Miscellaneous is what it is, although we've analyzed the details and I believe a significant portion of this account, we're going to reclassify out to expenses. So for example, a utility refund that's sitting in miscellaneous revenue, we're going to reclassify to offset utility expense. So even though the final report you get from me for the year will show less for miscellaneous income, there won't be any net impact on the bottom line. And I said early on, I tried to answer some questions as I went along, and I've already skipped one. So if we go back and look at one example, regional transportation, the question was asked, why are we at three-quarters of the year, three-quarters through the year, but actual is only about half of the budget for, for chapter seventy-one? Well, in fact, the state pays that on a quarterly basis, and the third quarterly installment is not received until, until early April. So we do these on a cash basis, the money wasn't actually physically received by March thirty-first, so hence that, that anomaly, if you will, that, that if we had held it open for one more week, you would have seen essentially three-quarters of the revenue received. Any more questions on revenues? The next report that you see is general fund expenses. This is, this is one that probably, I referred to a couple tweaks in the presentation, this is one that I try to present a maximum amount of information without making it so onerous to get through. So, so I've given you five columns of information, but you can't foot it across. The math doesn't work if you, if you try to utilize the expended and encumbered columns. What, the math that does work is if you take the revised budget, so the column with the parenthetical A, and subtract, and compare it with the projected amount at year-end, which has parenthetical B, that's the variance that we expect at year-end. The year-to-date expended and encumbered is essentially FYI to see what has actually gone through, the expended is what you've actually approved year-to-date, and the encumbered is what's been physically encumbered in the system. So I've presented for each classification code, the budget amount that's been posted into Munis, and what my department is projecting where we will be at the end of the year, which is column B. I think we've been advertising during the year, but, but the salaries group of accounts has gotten better in terms of budget variance as the year has gone on. It's not because we're paying our employees less, but the budget estimates carried from the beginning of the year typically prove to be more conservative than actual for a variety of reasons. If sal, if the salary projection holds, it represents a variance of only two-tenths of one percent. So it, in, in the aggregate, we hit that fairly closely again, and that's, that I think is, is what has happened in the past. The fringes account group gets paid in advance, so that variance appears to be where it will end at, at June thirtieth. Most of the remaining categories are tracking where we've been reporting them year-to-date, and so some several, several items of note. Capital outlay reflects items presented by the superintendent in the capital improvement plan in present, presenting the FY two thousand, two thousand nineteen budget. Those two, the two items that were presented that would be done with FY eighteen funds were the Leary Field light replacement and renovations to the admin building. I know that JD just received bids earlier this week for the lighting project, and the renovation to the admin building is, is an ongoing project, and I'm working with an architect who's, who's doing drawings as we speak to oversee that project. If we look at the debt service line item, we've expended more than we're projecting at year-end by exactly twenty-five thousand dollars, which represents the amount of reimbursement that the Friends of Leary Field will contribute to the district typically in June. So that will, that will result in a credit to this line item, and it'll bring the, the actual in line with the budget. Special ed tuition, category forty-one, reflects a net, on a net basis, a small number of placements with budget savings, but there was one individual placement where the savings was about three-hundred thousand dollars. It was a, it was a family that moved out, excuse me, early in the, early in the school year, and so that savings is, is the lion's share of the, of the total projected for that line. I've also noted in the past, and this was in my first report ever to you, that based on advice from my predecessor, Claire Genot, there are two cost centers, number thirty-one, building maintenance and forty-two utilities, that have gotten a bit out of alignment relative to their budgets, and has, and for the last several years, maintenance has come in significantly over budget, and utilities has come in significantly under budget, and I said that we would need to do a better job of budgeting to try and equalize those to better match the actual experience with budget, and we'll be looking into that in the upcoming weeks, now that the budgets have been formally adopted, to just do some realignment, budget transfers, however the process is, to get those into, into better shape. For, it, it doesn't, it doesn't help us if we know that one's going to be high and one's going to be low, well, why don't we try and get them more closely, more closely correct? In the final report for the year, I hope to do a variation analysis of how the cost line items differed between- line items differed between FY17 and FY18, and my analyst is working on this now. FY17, you may recall, had a net positive variance on the expense side of $850,000. We're looking at a net positive variance as of this report of $702,000. On the surface, that sounds like a pretty consistent year, but there are some pretty significant swings internally among the line items, and I want to do an analysis for you, just so that you can see the detail of some of those variances. Other questions on the expense line, the expense report, I should say?
Just a comment. I think if Kate and JD keep going on the utilities, you're going to have to move that to the revenue side instead of the expense side.
So, I will say, just not to be really quick, I assumed you were going to say, "I'm going to have to really," and I'm thinking, "My comeback is going to be, no, I'm going to move it to revenue." So, we're on the same page with that. Thank you. I provided the Munis expenditure report summaries. Note that the expended plus encumbered does not result in projected. I talked about that before. Not all cost categories encumber funds in a consistent manner. I'm hoping to make some changes on that in that regard, starting next year. I talked about capital outlay. I talked about special ed tuition. So, the next, the final two reports that you have, the first one is special revenue revolving in gift funds. Couple of things to call your attention to on the first page. The, in the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth section, under finance, the third line is circuit breaker. Once again, under receipts, we've received about $1,002,000. We expect about $2.4 million for the year, so that's the first two quarters, and the third quarter was received in the first week of April, similar to, and probably along with, the transportation aid reimbursement. And under the category of facilities, the last one on that first page, the very first line item, Douglas School Building Project, you can see that we set up a fund for the Douglas School feasibility study, and the transfer that you see, $710,000, was made from E and D. The remaining funds in this report don't present any surprises, in my opinion, and they've been tracking pretty consistently during the year. And I will say, similarly, the last report is a summary of the district grants. They're being spent down appropriately, so there's nothing of note that I feel worthy of commenting. As I mentioned, I have a final word, but any questions on the reports? So, as I mentioned earlier, administration is going to be reviewing this report, and as it is updated, as we get closer to year-end, this will take place. As was discussed during the last meeting of the Budget Subcommittee, we may bring suggestions for some strategic uses of finances to the next meeting. Certainly, on the list of potential uses would be high priority items from the capital improvement plan and the projected balance in circuit breaker. Both of these were addressed in a similar manner last year, which I believe was a very prudent use of the remaining budgeted funds. That is my report.
All right. Bridgette, do you have anything about town meeting?
No, town meeting went well, thanks to the administration, Dave, in particular, for the help on the slides, and Amy, because we, of course, plagiarized from what you had done for Acton Town Meeting, and thanks to everybody who was able to attend.
Okay, great. We're going to go into the school building committee update, and that's Mary.
Okay, so, MSBA approved SCANSCA as our OPM. SCANSCA, then, the next day after being approved, came to our school building committee meeting. They gave us a great presentation and reviewed the process for us and explained how they're going to support us through that process, so that's great. The next big step is we need to put out an RFP for the designer services. SCANSCA had already drafted it. JD and Bill have looked at it and approved it, and we voted for SCANSCA to release it. So, now, MSBA has it. They need to approve it. The goal is that we will release it on May 22nd with a due date of June 12th, and then the school building committee will review it. And then, we want to go to MSBA, oh, I didn't write those dates down, for July 10th and July 24th. So, the way this happens is there's a 16-member team who reviews the applications. We have three representatives on that, and MSBA has 13. So, at the first meeting, hopefully the 10th, they go through all of the applications, discuss them all, and decide who they want to have come for interviews, and then the second meeting would be the interviews and presumably the selection. In terms of the three members that we send, one is the superintendent or his designee. Peter was able to come to our school building committee meeting. We discussed it, whether it should be Bill or, well, it wouldn't be Bill because of the timing. So, should it be a designee or Peter? Peter's chosen to sit on that, so he'll take that right out of the gate. Then, the school building committee believes our other two members should be Marie and JD. So, one of those, because we're a region, in a town, it would be the town manager or their designee. Because we're a region, it can, the superintendent has that role, so they can designate. So, they can designate one of them, and one of them is a school committee choice. And so, what I can't remember, and I was poring through my notes, is, do we want the school committee to appoint JD? Yeah. So, Peter's going to appoint Marie, so we need a vote from this group to appoint JD as our representative.
So, Mary, we don't have a vote on our agenda?
Right.
But by the next meeting, we should?
Exactly. So, we don't need to vote it tonight? We can vote it on June 7th. That's plenty of time for all of this. But I wanted to share it tonight so that you'd be willing to make that vote. Or if you have any questions or concerns in the meantime, please let us know. I would say that JD is absolutely integral to this process, and he, I think, would be an outstanding representative for the school committee.
All right. Thank you, Mary. So, let's move to budget. Do you want to report anything on budget?
Sure. Just really quickly, Dave talked about some of the things we discussed, but we spent quite a bit of time talking about year-end potential expenditures vis-à-vis E and D. We also had a lengthy discussion about capital planning. We also talked about the need to reformulate the Subcommittee, perhaps prior to the end of this school year, is because as of the 22nd, Katie and I will be off the Subcommittee. Deanne is already off the Subcommittee, so that only leaves three members, Mary, Amy, and Diane. So, you might want to add that to the next agenda as well. And those are the highlights.
Right, because there was a reason we thought, I think it's to do any year-end advice.
Yes.
And if we don't have a quorum, we couldn't do that. And with all those members gone, we wouldn't have a quorum.
And also to talk about future capital plans, getting that up and running for the next year, so.
So, Beth, did you put that down for the next meeting? Thanks. Okay, policy. We have a second read on our first aid policy. Are there any other further comments or questions? Beth?
So, I'm looking for, oh, sorry, Eileen? Do you have a question, comment?
Hi, Beth. I have a question, or maybe to Marie. I forgot, I don't know if, we probably don't put that in this, into this content, but I forgot if we discussed number five, accident report forms captured in each schoolhouse office and incidents entered into the student's house record. If a parent asks for, look at the student house record about this incident, is that available to the parents or not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, please.
Move to approve?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. You also have a first read. Marie, are you doing this one?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
So, in your packet, you see the updated security camera systems policy, and we made three changes to it, and I'll talk through them. The first is, so first of all, this policy was developed before we sort of started having video cameras and before we were putting them on school buses, so we knew we had to have a policy. We worked with council, we developed the policy, and now we've been using them for several years, and we've had some experiences that have led us to make a couple of changes. So, the first one is, we had everything in policy before. It was new. The policy Subcommittee suggested that we break out policy and procedures, because a chunk of it seemed more procedural. So, that's just a change in format, if you will. On the first paragraph, so it's tracked, so you can see what's underlined and what's crossed out, the phrase "as authorized by the school committee" was added. We have received feedback from a school committee member that would prefer not to have that in there. I certainly, we, the administration doesn't feel strongly about that being in there. I think it was a suggestion at the policy meeting. So, you guys can talk about if you want to take that out or not. We added the sentence in the bottom paragraph of the policy that says that procedures will be developed and followed, and what the procedures would be regarding. So, that's a new sentence. The main reason that we brought it forward for a change was that there was language in there that said, "Video that is used as evidence in a student discipline matter will be considered part of the student's record and will be retained in accordance with student record laws and regulations." So, that was put in there at the beginning, and now that we've lived with this policy, we realize that we can't do that. So, by saying that it's a student record and will be retained as such, that requires that we retain records related to each student. We couldn't possibly search every video for every occurrence of a child and keep that as part of their student record, nor can we retain it at length. So, on advice of council, we're taking that sentence out. And the other piece is that we've also drastically expanded the amount of video that we're recording when we put it on all our buses, and we're now about to add more buses, along with some of the buildings. So, we had started with a 30-day retention policy, and we're recommending a 15-day retention policy based on our storage capacity and the cost of expanding servers and all of that. It's possible we could expand some of our storage beyond what we have right now, but to guarantee that we're keeping 30 days, we don't have that capacity without spending quite a bit more money. So, those are the changes. We're happy to entertain any questions. The part where in the first sentence, it says, "For the purpose of enhancing school safety and security as authorized by the school committee," I think Eileen asked that that potentially be taken out. We're fine with that, and it's up to you guys. We could go back to the policy sub if you want.
This is a side question. So, you just mentioned, all the new buses, they will have video recording? Is that real-time, or is what?
All of our buses have video recording now.
Real-time recording?
Yes.
Okay. So, is that helping kind of the safety? Is that a purpose for helping, or is that?
Quite a bit, actually. It's remarkable how helpful it is. We have lots of kids on the bus, behind the bus driver, things come up, people don't know what happened. The video's quite helpful.
So, I assume that somebody kind of controlled the bus and the traffic, they monitored the real-time thing, so they can help to the situation? Is that how it works? I'm just trying to understand how it works.
Let me try that. No, it's recording while the bus is moving. No one's watching the recording at the time, so it's being stored, and as Marie indicated, if there's an issue that comes up, a concern that gets raised, we can go back to that particular recording and look at it.
Sorry, I misunderstood. Thank you.
Sorry, I want to explain a little bit. I do not like the line "as authorized by the school committee" there. I've got some email heard from the community members before, and there are some policies, you know, like to put on school committee name. So, especially like the security camera systems, I think it's purely management of the school facility or everything. It's apparently it's a safety issue, whatever it's really need, as we can see, and we don't have to have the authorized by the school committee. That's what I feel about that. Okay, so, if everybody wants to put there, I'm okay with it. I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Yeah, Bridgette?
So, I understand, I think I understand your point, Eileen. The fact that we have a policy that indicates we have, we use video camera, that policy is approved by the school committee. So, in one sense, the line "as authorized by the school committee" is a little bit redundant because we are approving the policy, which talks about the use of cameras. So, we're already approving the use of cameras by virtue of approving the policy. So, I don't feel strongly that that line even needs to be there, because by approving the policy, we're already talking about the use of video camera, but that's my two cents.
So, I'm going to, if you have any more questions, if you could send them to the policy Subcommittee. This is a first read, so we will talk about it again at our next meeting. It's getting really close. Okay. I'm going to move us to the consent agenda. The statement, sorry, the warrant statement. I just had it. Hold on. Oh. So, the warrant is $4,552,616.39. And I'm going to start with the most recent, we have minutes to approve from 4/26/18, and amended minutes from 4/12/18. Anything to hold? Okay. The high school field trip to Norway, you have that in your packet. We're just approving that. And then, the donations to our schools. The Mass Academic Decathlon donation of $800 to the ABRHS Academic Decathlon Team. The Kbyte.com donation of $1,900 to the Acton Boggsboro Regional High School Science Team for the national championship. And the Seth Sangreal Foundation donation of $15,000 to the Acton Boggsboro Regional High School Academic Decathlon Team. So, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Do you want to talk about the? I'm going to turn this over to Bill.
So, in your packet is a letter from the, from the Division of Open Government of the Attorney General's Office regarding an open meeting law complaint that was filed previously, and this is the determination. On February 17th, the district received an open meeting law complaint from Stephen Ballard alleging a violation, sorry, I can't read my writing, alleging a violation of the open meeting law by failing to approve in a timely manner the meeting minutes of January 11th. The Attorney General's Regulations define timely manner, excuse me, as approval, quote, "within the next three public body meetings or within 30 days, whichever is later, unless the public body can show good cause for further delay." The minutes of January 11th were subsequently approved on March 1st by the committee. A response to Mr. Ballard, as required, indicating that the minutes were approved on March 1st, was sent. In that response, we did concede that the minutes, the minutes were approved late, and that the school committee, and, and also indicated that part of the reason for that was that the school committee had been extremely busy and focused during that 30-day period on the superintendent's search. Additionally, I have another note. Anyway, additionally, we provided, in that letter, in that response to Mr. Ballard, which goes also to the Attorney General's Office, we did provide, as a result of, of our concession, specific remedial efforts that the district would be, would be taking, would be, would be making. As you know, a complainant can seek further review of the complaint by the Division of Open Government of the AG's office after the district has reviewed and responded to the complaint. There's a timeframe within which that has to happen, and Mr. Ballard did so. As outlined in the May 8th letter from the Department of Open Government, it was their conclusion that there was not good cause for the delay, and hence the violation determination. So, so, that's for the record. We do have additional minutes that need to be approved that go back to last summer, and once those minutes are approved, we will have, we will be in complete compliance going back for nearly, nearly a year. And once we get to the next agenda item, I have some, some additional, I think pertinent information to share with you about those, about a conversation I actually had with an attorney, with, with, with an Assistant Attorney General in the Division of Open Government just this week regarding those minutes. So, I'd like to share, share that conversation with you when we get to there. But are there any questions around the, around the open meeting law violation letter, determination? So, earlier this week, I had the opportunity to speak with an Assistant Attorney General who works in the Division of Open Government. It, it was actually a very productive conversation on two counts. First, she was able to clarify for us what has been, an understanding that the district has had in the past in terms of responding to open meeting law complaints. And that was around, the district had been operating regarding the timelines and that are identified in the various regulations. We were operating under the understanding that on snow days, when offices are closed and we're not open for business, that for us, those were not business days. And, but she was able to, to clarify that, while they understand that snow days certainly cause issues, especially around some, some timing regulations for school districts, that, that the Attorney General's Office does not view snow days as non-business days. So, they do count. So, so, we're, we've clarified that, and that was very helpful. Secondly, I then had the opportunity to have a conversation with her and to explain, and again, this was, the conversation was in relation to the letter that we received, and we responded to that letter around the timeliness, because we wanted to clarify that issue of snow days, and, and they contacted us. So, I had the opportunity at that point to explain that the district was still working on the approval of four meeting minutes from last summer, that they would be on the agenda for tonight's meeting, and that, that would bring to, would bring the school committee to full compliance with all of our past minutes, as I indicated. So, so, her, her, her response to that was, we talked about the fact, and, and she reminded that in our response to, to the Attorney General for that open meeting law complaint, we had indicated certain remedial efforts that were taking place. She thought that those were, those were very appropriate, and that to continue to work and ensure that we had that process in place, so that we were, we were, we were meeting, you know, the timelines and the deadlines for making sure that minutes were, were being approved in a timely manner. So, that was very helpful, frankly. So, that brings us to the approval of those meeting minutes from August 24, 2017, August 1st, July 11th, and June 30th. And those have been provided for you in your packet.
Mary?
Before discussing the minutes, I wonder, you know, we, we designate the responsibility of typing up the minutes to Beth, but there are times where we do get incredibly busy, and, or she may go on vacation or something like that, and I wonder if we need a backup system to support Beth. And then, secondly, even though Beth is doing the minutes, it's our responsibility, and so I also wonder if we want some kind of check system that either the chair does, or the chair asks someone else, just to keep track of it, to make sure we don't fall behind.
So, let me address that, Mary, if you don't mind. Beth and I have been engaged in a number of conversations for the last couple of weeks, and so, so, one of the, one of the remedial efforts that we, we plan to put in place is to construct a, a monitoring sheet. And, and we'll begin that by, we can, we can add the, the two minutes in June to that, but, but the idea was starting fresh. We, we have the dates for next year's meetings in place. We'll put those on an actual list, a sheet. And in regards to the responsibility, I think you're right. I think that the superintendent, the chair of the school committee, and the secretary need to be the three key individuals that are monitoring the timeliness of, of minutes. And so, what this checklist will do, this monitoring sheet actually will do for us, is that every meeting that those three individuals have, and they happen twice a month, to look at the agenda, determine what the agenda for the next meeting is. The first agenda item for that meeting will be to check the monitoring sheet, to make sure that we're on target, that we're either within the three meeting, public meetings after, or, or the 30 days, exactly whichever is later. The Attorney General, as you know, though, really encourages public bodies, if they can, to approve minutes at the next meeting, and, and certainly, I think that's a standard that we'll, we'll aim for here. So, so, I think, I think we literally will have a physical, an opportunity to physically, at least twice a month, see where we stand, and if we, we're, you know, if we're getting close, we can, we can make sure that, for whatever reason, that becomes a priority for the next meeting. So, so, hopefully, I think that will be a reasonable system to, to take care of. And then, as, as you go forward, I think the issues of people being on vacation, certain things that may come up during, during the course of a school year that may put, that may change, you know, the workload, in a particular time, we should have a Plan B to go to, so that we're, we're able to meet the rules and stay in compliance.
So, is there any discussion regarding the minutes? I'm going to ask for an approval, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
Minutes from August 24th, 2017, August 1st, 2017, July 11th, 2017, and June 30th, 2017.
All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Angie, you had a question?
I'm going to abstain, because I wasn't involved.
Yes. Okay. So, the, the policy is you're welcome to vote on it, but if you would like to abstain, then that's also option, your option. Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? So, that's Jenny and Angie, both abstained. Thank you very much. That concludes our meeting. The only thing is, I know Beth sent out an email regarding the summer workshop. If it's possible, you can make it by, at 5:00, please let her know. If you, if you know you absolutely cannot, please let her know that. It just gives us a little bit more time to get through stuff that needs to be gotten through, I guess. Okay. So, I don't have anything else on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you raised your hand. Yeah, I'm going to, yeah, you have a question?
I just, I got this one today, and I saw there's something, one thing that I mentioned.
Okay. So, um, okay, we're going to move into executive session, but if you want to, I, I can save that for when we come back, or do you want to share it now? You want to? Okay. It says approval of minutes. Yep. That's what we do every week. We just, right? Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, um, yeah, go ahead, do that now.
Yeah, mine's just quick, because I got this one, and I thought this is kind of interesting. On May 10th, then, there, for the fiscal 2019, there's a 3% increase over the, for the Chapter 70, and kind of, and there, there was a recommendation to adjust the, the formula as well. So, I just wanted to mention that.
The legislature. That's great. Yeah.
Actually, that's the Senate Ways and Means Budget that was presented to the full Senate. As far as I know, the Senate hasn't voted their budget yet. The Chapter 70 aid numbers to Acton-Boxborough, that would result from the Senate Ways and Means Budget, are the same numbers that the House voted, the House budget voted. So, so, there's no impact yet on us for Chapter 70. We won't know if there is, if we're receiving more money than what, what was in the budget until the actual budget passes.
All right. Thanks. Okay. So, I'm going to ask that we move into executive session to be convened under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22F, to consider approval and possible release of executive session minutes from previous meetings on 4/2/18, 3/12/18, 11/16/17, 2017, 10/3/2017, 8/24/17, 8/1/17, 7/11/17, 6/22/17, and 6/13/17. And we need to, yeah. So, we need to roll call vote, Paul. Oh, I'm sorry. Mary did. Just heard a voice over there. So, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
You have to say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We are now, we're now in.